Good morning, and welcome to the June 20, 2023 meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The Board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. The Board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is a public hearing where we expect to hear new applicants explain their requests and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed the general meeting and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about the cases that came up in the prior month's meeting. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there is no need to hear additional comments regarding traffic again, but we would like to hear anything new that has not been addressed. In order to allow everyone to have the opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a timer for that purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask at this time that you silence your mobile devices. Additionally, if you do come up to speak, please give your name and your address so we may have that for the records. With that, we thank you all for being here, and I'll turn the meeting over to the Secretary, Ronald Roberts.
Good morning. Item one. Minor modification of a conditional use to adopt a new site development plan for an existing church on property located at 2120 Airport Road. Owner: Harvest Assembly of Guard, Inc., applicant Stitzel Engineering and Construction. This is for consideration of final decision.
Demaris Thal, Senior Planner, Community Economic Development. The following request is for the minor modification of conditional use permit to adopt a new development plan at the property 2120 Airport Road. The property is zoned, limited development. It's the LD District within the suburban neighborhood contact sub-district. The following is the general location of the property. It's east of Airport Road and north of the Polk Parkway. This is the subject property. The change will be in this area, this green area here. And you see, there's a residential to the north and residential to the south, and rest is all wetland area. And, let's see here. This here is the following photos of the property. This is the front of the church facing east. This is actually in the center of the property, western side of the project area facing east towards the wetland area. And this is the northern property boundary facing southeast. And this is the southeast corner facing southwest towards Airport Road. And this is the southern boundary facing north. And this is the southwest corner of the project area facing northwest, northeast, sorry. This is the previous approved site plan. The project, the property had three phases at the time with their proposed third phase being located in this area here. The new site plan has the proposed building further north of the property and a little slightly different parking configuration as well. And before I move forward, I'll invite the applicant up and see if they have any...
Hello, I'm Art Stitzel, Stitzel Engineering, representing Harvest. There are new building addition and...
We just had to give your address also, please. The address of your company or your person?
Uh...
Or your own address, either one.
Yeah, it's 317 West Highland Drive, Lakeland, Florida. So they, they're really, they're not increasing their facility by traffic or what they're doing is doing a relocation of the existing building that is the Assembly Hall right now, which will be changed into Sunday School classrooms. And so the new building will just, that seating will just move into the new building with about a 100-seat increase. So we don't really expect any increase in parishioners to the, to the new, new church.
Any questions from the Board?
Just to clarify, this building, this 20,000 square foot footprint, that was previously approved in the 2003 condition we used, so they're just updating the site plan to, but this 20 years later, so that's really what we're looking at here today.
Any comments from the public? Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Was this notified to the surrounding area or was it just posted in front of the building?
So we did not send that notification letters next door because it was a previously approved entitlement, so we didn't think it was necessary in this case here.
The building location from where it is proposed to where it was previously, is it closer to, I think someone...
Actually further north from, from Lake Silver Hill Highlands. That's the subdivision to the south.
It's the parcel directly to the north?
That's actually zone I-1. If you want to go back to the aerial, Demaris?
That's the, the tenor property that's between the site and...
There's the house next door, yeah, they're between, between the two there, yes. So, but I mean, it beats or exceeds the setbacks to what, you know, what was, I don't know, the current condition we use. It's actually less than the existing buildings to the west there.
Well, to the west would be just, you know, vacant land. Vacant land and rooms to go a little bit to the northwest.
About the existing Assembly Hall, the building there, if you notice the green roof on the aerial?
Yes, the, the farthest west is the existing Assembly, yes.
Any questions from anybody else on the Board? Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to...
And, oh, you have a set of conditions to present?
Following are the conditions as amended for the ordinance 4245. The site shall be developed in accordance with site developments submitted, a copy of which is included in Attachment C. With the approval of Director of Community Economic Development, minor adjustments may be made at the time of site plan review without requiring a modification of this conditional use. Number two, requirements for parking, landscape buffering, et cetera, shall be in accordance with City of Lakeland Land Development Code. Number three is the, this conditional use is approved for the benefit of the applicant and for the use of the specific, specified with the application. The character or benefit of this conditional use shall not be changed or transferred with, transferred with City Commission approval by resolution.
Should that be found?
Shall not be changed. Sorry about that.
We'll make that...
Number four is permitted uses, is the permitted use shall be limited to the church, church offices included in adherence to ordinance 4915 and typical accessory uses.
Questions from the...
One more, sorry.
One more, oh, okay. Sorry I rushed you.
And transportation. It's binding concurrence determinations shall be made with each site plan's middle. The site plan, the site's State Road 572 Airport Road driveway design shall comply with all Florida Department of Transportation permitting requirements. And American with Disability Act ADA compliant pedestrian route shall be constructed between the existing Airport Road frontage sidewalk and principal buildings entrances. And the, an operational plan shall be submitted with each site plan's middle to ensure that site traffic does not queue into the public right-of-way.
The conditions, the applicant satisfied with the conditions, he can abide by all of those conditions, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board? Now, is there a motion for, to approve the request?
Motion to approve as presented with the minor modification to item three.
Have motion all in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Minor modification of planned unit development zoning to adopt a new site development plan and increase the maximum, maximum allowable square footage from 1,100,000 to 1,143,450 square feet on property located at 3,400 University Boulevard. Owner: Lakeland Logistics Park LLC, applicant Smiley and Associates, Inc., and this is also for consideration of final decision.
Hi, good morning, for the record. I'm Philip Scares. I'm a principal planner with Community Economic Development. As Mr. Roberts stated, this is a minor modification to PUD 5587, that's the ordinance number, previously owned by Advent Health. Property is located on University Boulevard, south of I-4, west of Florida Poly, which is over here, and east of State Road 33. This is the aerial. University Boulevard to the west of Florida Poly, between Florida Poly and State Road 33 are largely undeveloped. But again, this is the existing PUD. This is the aerial of the site. Again, University Boulevard in this area remains largely undeveloped. Just have a couple of location slides, or this is, excuse me, this is a proposed site plan that the applicant has, changes, and I'll go over the, the changes here in a second, but just wanted to provide you some, some onsite slides. This is looking northwest into the site. And this is looking east on University Boulevard. And this is just looking north, straight into the site. And I'm going to advance the slides here real quick. I just wanted to show you, this was the previous development options that are, that are adopted today. And again, there's a couple of different scenarios, one with the, you know, large, you know, large warehouse or breaking it up into two warehouse buildings. But I'm just gonna, going crazy with my clicker here. Just park it here on this site plan, I'll let the applicant take over, they have some more information for you, but instead of the two development options, there are four buildings onsite with a larger warehouse building in the center there. Idea there is kind of like buffer that, that cross dock warehouse from University and I-4 with the, with the, with the smaller buildings and provide, still provide enhanced landscaping along, along University Boulevard. So I'm going to park it right here, I'm going to leave it, leave it over to the applicant with, for their presentation, and then I will summarize conditions.
Good morning, Mark Smiley. I'm the engineer record for the project, add 624 Kingfish Road, North Palm Beach, 33408. I'm going to keep it short and try to turn it over to Mr. McCrany to explain his company, but just wanted to let you know that we worked well with staff here to keep us kind of in the guardrails of the existing approved PUD, making sure that we adhere to some needs with the city, expanding public utilities, worked well with the DOT to understand the future wildlife crossing to the east, be sensitive of that. We know there's some FEMA issues here that we're definitely adhering to. And we have, we've tried to recognize the sensitivity of the project. One thing that I think is key of the change is there's no bay doors facing the public right-of-way anymore. That previous one, if you noticed, had bay doors all over the public right-of-way. We've hidden all that. We have beautiful elevations that you'll see in the handout, and I think that if there's any technical issues, I'm happy to answer that, but I really want to turn over to Mr. McCrany. You'll find that when McCrany Property Company comes to, to the city, they bring not just the company, but the family. We've worked well in the neighborhood with projects on County Line Road, with the groom's family, doing very similar work, and I think that this is a, an excellent project for the city. So here's Stephen McCrany, President, CEO of McCrany Property Company.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for hearing us this morning. I'm Stephen McCrany. My address is 189 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 33281. Just very briefly, we work very close with the city on this project in modifying the existing plan. We work closely also with Steve Scruggs and his team. You will note that all of the competitive projects that are with, within the market have bay doors fronting the major roadways. It was asked of us if we could find a way to articulate our project in a way that would, that would present a better face to the, to the, to the two roadways, both University and I-4. We've accomplished that through numerous iterations of the project and, and bouncing it back and forth on the city, and we've achieved this project. Mark tweaked out the square footage, I think we're very, very close here. Further, if you'll, if you'll turn to this page here in the handout that we provided, we were also asked to be very sensitive to Florida Polytechnic and the, and the, truly the imagination that went into that building. We have created a project, and you'll, you'll note if you flip through that there are, you know, a number of examples, but we've worked on the coloring, including the way the, the crossbars tie in the netting of Florida, Florida Polytechnic. And in our buildings, we, in these buildings, we have used that same netting look that will be imprinted in the concrete to, to keep that, that design going. We've, we've, we've worked to make it very contemporary in nature. The building will be nicely lit up as well as Florida Polytechnic is, so a lot of back look, lit lighting. I will tell you, I develop all over the southeast US. I'm a self-started guy. We're the most active in the southeast and ranked in the top 10 developers in the country. You will find that everything that I touch makes the community a better place to live. The landscaping on my properties will be as, as good as the landscaping on my own personal home, but, you know, people spend so many waking hours at the office that we want people to, to want to come to these facilities. But we're happy to take any questions, and thank you for receiving us today.
Mr. McCrany, any questions from members of the Board?
I have a question. So you just mentioned you want people to come to these facilities. Is it a warehouse? Are there going to be retail space? What, what would you like people to come to that facility for?
I mean, the people that lease from us, you know...
Sir, can you speak into the microphone, please?
The people that lease from us, we, we build a really beautiful product. My sense is, when you go out and you go to a meeting, you know, it takes a lot of time during the day, right? And I, I want to build places where people want to bring people to the facility versus, versus taking their time and wasting time driving to other, other meetings.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay. Thank you.
We have conditions, and just before Mr. Scares reads out the, the staff conditions, I also just wanted to highlight that this area is within the Central Florida Innovation District, and so this has been a really, a big focal point of employment. We appreciate Mr. McCrany and his group working with staff to have a development plan that could encourage more manufacturing or other types of research and development activities other than just a basic cross dock warehouse development, which is allowed today. One of the other key things to note, too, is, is that there are a number of transportation investments that have been made in the past, not the least of which is University Boulevard Research Way and the new interchange at the Pace Road, Polk Parkway interchange about 10 years ago, but also as part of the Governor's Moving Florida Forward Plan, the complete reconstruction of State Road 33, I-4 interchange at exit 38, which right now is scheduled to be programmed in 2028, could be advanced to 2024, but that's also part of a larger package that includes the forelining of State Road 33 back to Old Comby Road, as well as two wildlife crossings as part of the Florida Wildlife Corridor immediately west of the, or immediately east of the site. So there's a lot that's happening in this area right now, and so we were very appreciative of the applicant, you know, working with us on a site design that, that would complement all of those things that are happening in this area.
And going into the conditions, one important to note that, that none of the permitted uses are being, being altered. This is, allows the, permitted uses are the, those uses permitted by I-2, plus those additional uses that were allowed under the previous ordinance, which include those medical facilities, clinics, community buildings, flex space to accommodate a mixture of office and research and development uses, the hospital uses, recreational indoor facilities such as gymnasiums, swim pools, racquetball courts, and of course, and vocational schools. So those uses that are, that are really consistent and compatible with the Florida Poly area still are retained in this. And then obviously the prohibited uses are still there. Agricultural services, the mobile home sales, rental and service agencies, the motor vehicle repair and retail, outdoor storage of, of, of motorhomes, boats and trailers, things like that, veterinary, veterinary clinics. Those are going to be still, those are still prohibited. Again, just running through here, just some of the language is being taken out to reflect the code. Obviously, the maximum floor area, again, has been increased by that 43,450 square feet, going from the 1.1 million to the 1.43. The site access, this G1 condition here is just, just a change to reflect the, the revised site plan for the access points. Some language was taken out. The development options are being deleted as now there only, there is only one development option, so those C1 and C2 development options have been, have been deleted. The access to the King parcel, which was a parcel in central north adjacent to I-4, which was previously privately owned, the acts, you know, the, the previous ordinance had a, had access provision to that parcel, although it was still under private ownership. That has gone away. It's under, all under one ownership now. So reflecting changes to the transportation currency, including maximum PMP hour trips, and reflecting requirement for bicycle parking and ADA pedestrian routes within the site. Again, there's a new attachment C that's being adopted. Attachment C1 and C2 are being deleted, the old development options, as well as the landscape options, LP1 and LP2. Those are being replaced by a, an enhanced landscaping buffer that's shown will be the new attachment for LP1. And I believe that is it, yes. And staff stands for any questions you may have? And those are the conditions, and we do recommend approval for the minor modification.
There appears to be a lot of wetlands involved on the site. Is, have there been any environmental concerns voiced?
So we have an environmental consultant that's actually working with Southwest Florida and the DEP going through that. We've tried to preserve the wetlands, the, the largest parts of the wetlands on the sides, and of course, there's flows that come through from off-site that will continue through the property in order to keep general drainage in its current pattern.
Joe?
So while the size of the buildings are relatively the same from the previous development to this, seems like there's a lot more truck bays or options for, for trucks. What's the anticipated increase in traffic based on this site plan?
It's, it's really the potential type of tenants, and, and I would say it's, it's quite different from the previous approvals. There's, those are one massive building, two very large buildings, two, two, four, particularly three smaller buildings. The one in the middle is definitely shading, so to speak, or hiding the, the bay doors. As far as the truck traffic or the anticipated peak traffic, because we have smaller, smaller buildings, the potential of smaller companies could come in and fill these, these buildings, presenting more, you know, individual company jobs, that's just going to generate a potential of more, more traffic when you have multiple tenants.
The formally approved plant, the formally approved plan is a, is a bulk facility that would be, that would have driven just large truck traffic solely. This is, this is modified while it bring, while it brings in smaller users. It could bring in a few more cars because it drives employment, but it is not the bulk facility that's presently the approved plan.
And, and the trip generation, we've been working very closely with the applicant's traffic consultant on the trip generation, really comparing the current allowed cross dock facility usage versus a, a kind of a mix between the cross dock and industrial park. And, and that's why in the, in the conditions, you see the, the maximum PMP trips increased from 132... from 132 to 308 is to reflect that. And really, that's all consistent with what we're trying to do in terms of getting more active employment in this, in this area. The, the methodology assumes, you know, and this is using ITE data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that there's probably 600, 650 or so truck trips a day that would be expected under a typical scenario. But as we found with other similar type of business park or industrial park users, that we also have a lot of panel trucks and other smaller vehicles that fit under a heavy vehicle category that could also use this facility as well. And so it wouldn't be just a steady stream of semis coming in and out onto University Boulevard. You know, certainly staff has concerns about just the impact that large trucks would have on the university itself. And, and, and that's a city facility. And so this type of development mix, you know, while there still would be large truck traffic, it wouldn't be to the same degree. And the intent would be is to have more employees, more bodies on site to take advantage of being in the Innovation District.
And then the site plan looks like those, it accommodates left-in and left-outs where previously it was right-in, right-out only?
Correct. Right now, the plan right, is to have two full movement driveway connections on either end of the, of the site and then a right-in, right-out in the middle. The site has about a half-mile frontage along University Boulevard. So from a spacing standpoint, it certainly would meet our, our land development code standards. And it would also allow opportunities to separate the truck traffic from the passenger vehicles.
No right lanes in?
That would be part of the permitting. And so the conditions do reflect that there is potential, in fact, a likelihood that we would have right turns at, at least the main entrances on either end where the trucks would be, would be entering and exiting.
And do we anticipate this being phased construction at all?
Yes, we'll do this in two phases.
And in each of those phased-out scenarios, are we also preserving that avoidance of the, the docks being visible? Or are we setting it up so that we'll preserve, you know, avoiding having those dock terminals facing a public roadway?
Yes.
So what's, what's the anticipated, what's the anticipated phase?
The, we have a couple of tenants that we are, we are already working with here. So if that is the case, we would build the, the two buildings fronting on, on I-4 first.
Back to the slide of the original plan, please. I want to see exactly how much of that land, I mean, because that's massive. You're taking away a massive amount of wetlands and green space.
Ma'am, it's the, it's the same coverage. It's the same, however you add it up, it's the same amount of, of land coverage.
And the area, the, the parcel up against Interstate 4 on the north end, that was the King parcel. So when this, when the PUD was originally adopted, it was a little bit of an awkward situation in that you had two owners within the PUD area. And so we had a condition in there about the cross-access. There was no real plan on the King portion of the property. And based on what we were able to find from the property preservers' office, that was purchased by Adventist Health Sunbelt back in 2017. And so all of that is, as Mr. Scares stated, is all under the same ownership of Adventist Health Sunbelt. So that is a little bit of the difference in terms of what you see in the building areas that are generally facing University Boulevard versus more spread out campus-type plan that utilizes the entire, the entire site.
Where are the crosses going to be located for?
The, the wildlife crossings are immediately to the west, generally on the Williams property. The design for those are underway right now by DOT. There is some right-of-way that's programmed in the DOT work program, but as of, as of yet, construction isn't funded. That is also part of that Moving Florida Forward, Forward package for the entire 33-I-4 area.
And will those be completed before the whole parcel is completed? I guess that's my concern.
That really depends on the DOT funding. If the state funding comes through, through Moving Florida Forward, then all of that would begin construction in fiscal year 2024. And, and that's about 1,100-day construction timeline is what we've heard from the department. So that would be the best-case scenario clearly for everybody involved, is to get that wildlife crossing done. But that's all, that's all still in the hands of DOT and the state.
The minister's out of the picture altogether. Is that correct?
That's, that's our understanding as well.
Any other questions from the board?
The question, you had enhanced landscape along University. Is there any plan along I-4 at all?
Yes, there is a landscape buffer along I-4 as well. And as Mr. McCraney mentioned before, he really does landscape his projects very well. It's not just, it's, it's, you'll see from the lower pictures, a lot of color that come in. It'll, it'll have full landscaping along I-4 as well.
University have any aesthetic requirements for signage along that area? What's the plan out there?
Oh, it, it would really default back to the land, land development code. You know, and certainly as you start getting into the Williams PUD, there are very specific landscaping, signage, building design requirements as you get into the Williams PUD, but not specifically in this area related to signage. But the code, we're comfortable that the code itself would have limiting factors to help complement the corridor.
Just from the board. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. That being the case, I ask, are you all in accord with all of the conditions that have been stated?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve is presented.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very much.
Thank you.
Item three, minor modification of plan unit development zoning for Lakeland Interstate Business Park to update the list of permitted uses and adopt new performance standards on approximately 7.25 acres located at 2425 Interstate Drive. Owner, Lillport LLC, applicant Daniel Lewis. And this is also for consideration of final decision.
Hello, good morning again. Damaris Stahl, Senior Planner with Community Economic Development. I stated, this is just a minor modification to the existing PUD for, for performance, new performance standards and permitted uses. This here's the general site location. Property is located just east of Interstate Drive and south of I-4. And the area change on the PUD consists of lots five through seven, which are, you can see here, the highlighted area, and the surrounding uses for this property. The following are the images of the existing property. This is looking southwest from the Integrated Supply Company parking lot. And this is looking northeast from the Land Rover parking lot. And this is south from the Land Rover parking lot. This is north, looking north from Industrial Laundry Facility. And before I read the conditions, I'll invite the applicant, oh, let's see if they describe their project.
Good morning. I'm Dan Lewis. I'm the representative for the owner and also to assist with the potential buyer for this property.
Lewis, would you give your address, please?
Oh, excuse me. I'm with Ridge Project Management, 600 Lake Jussie Drive, Winter Haven, Florida. The project fits all of the general criteria of the current PUD from a site plan standpoint. However, we would like to, if we could, make some adjustments to the permitted uses as well as what would be excluded in order to make it clear as to what we intend on doing. And also, so in the future, when you tend to look at somebody's application, they'll, they'll know whether or not they're able to have their project in this. The project currently has a buffer along the eastern side of the, of it, which helps buffers the residential property that you may have seen in a couple of the photos. And so there's specifics to this project that are highlighted with an asterisk as to whether or not is allowed on our specific lots. And so some of the adjustments we'd like to make have already been presented to you. And we had one additional one that we spoke to the staff that they've wanted us to bring before you, which was in our section, section B6C, Roman numeral 10. I'm sorry about all the nomenclature. It gets pretty complicated in here. The section that we would like to adjust is, we would like to say no household mini-storage or vehicular storage except work vehicles. And trailers for contractors may be parked in designated spaces. The wording currently has "to the rear of the buildings," which is a little difficult for us since we don't have any really back parking. Our service area is in the back of the buildings. And the parking that we would have would be not long-term. It's just for the actual tenants to use when they have like a work trailer or work car for overnight. You know, they, they go take their personal car home and leave the, the vehicle there. And it's going to have George Kelly, who's the person wanting to develop the project. He'd like to speak to you about how his project would look. And I believe there are a couple of photos for how the parking would be that should have been brought up.
I'm George Kelly, 1935 Commerce Lane in Jupiter, Florida. We've developed about 300,000 feet of this product down in the St. Lucie, Martin County areas, and would love to build one up here in Lakeland. It's a small-user flex space project. Our, our projects are like incubators for the local businesses. They go anywhere from several hundred square feet up to 1,000, not these million-square-foot, you know, buildings. And incidentally to the uses, a lot of the guys, some of the guys will, as, as Dan said, drive a personal vehicle there, get in their service vehicle, and then leave the service vehicle there overnight or on the weekends. We don't allow outside storage, storage of other vehicles that are not in use, you know, in the daily work of the tenants. We don't allow any outside work in the parking lots or the, or the driveway areas. We try to keep a very ni, nice, clean project. And, and I guess I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have.
Can't ask any questions. So is it a parking lot that you're, what, describe just what you want?
It's a standard front elevation with parking, rear elevation with service drives. We have faced all of the service drive overhead doors interior to the project so that they don't face the residential areas where possible. And it's just that, I think the pictures will explain it better than I can. It's just that a few vehicles get left there by, by the tenants for, for convenience.
There's nothing there presently? There's nothing there currently on that property?
Nothing.
I see.
It was our intention, I think that, that Dan alluded to this, that there's some existing natural buffer between the residential and the development that we propose. And we intend to leave that buffer there to the best extent we can and utilize that to help separate our project from the residential to the east of us.
Sure you can leave it the best you can and then add to it because those are people's homes. And they've been there for a while.
It's pretty thick, it's, it's pretty thick right now. We'll do whatever it takes to make the city satisfied with us, with the project.
There were a couple, excuse me. There were a couple of photos that showed the buffer that maybe you can show back again?
This is not our usual meeting space, so we're having to work with the equipment we have been given.
Understood. Yeah, they were, you kind of scrolled through those a minute ago and those were good. And then we would, had some additional ones for the actual parking.
And, and our, our staff's concern about the, having the service vehicles parking or having the ability to park in front of the building is that that's not allowed based on land development code sign, section 4.9. And so since we don't have the ability to project the language, I'll just read it into the record here, that the code defines a vehicle sign as a sign displayed upon a vehicle where the vehicle is routinely parked or displayed adjacent to and visible from public right-of-way, and where other parking spaces are available to the vehicle that are not adjacent to and visible from the public right-of-way. So since Interstate Drive is a public roadway, our concern is, is that the service vehicles would then be parked in that front area and become additional signage within that, within that park. And so having the ability to park behind the building, and, and since we do not have a binding site plan as part of this, this plan, we can work with the applicant to have sufficient areas behind the buildings to be able to support the service vehicles. I don't think there's any issue with having, you know, the employees have their personal vehicles in the parking lot, but just the service vehicles and the branding and everything that normally occurs with those, having those parked against the right-of-way would be, would be our primary concern relative to land development code.
This point, I understand your, your concerns, not being able to see any pictures at all. Is there any suggestions from staff as to how we can get around this issue with, without any, with minimum inconvenience for the applicant?
Our, our tech guru is on his way.
Do you have any other comments, you and Shweik, while we're waiting for, for the guru to arrive, sir?
I'd like to just say that, you know, due to the nature of where it's located, I mean, this is in a business park center, it seems to me that it would not, it's not our intent to create more advertising. It's just, that's how these businesses operate.
I'm still a little unclear. So you are hoping to have businesses park their business vehicle or their personal vehicle and leave? I'm still a little confused as to what you're putting there.
Parking is incidental to the businesses that are there. I mean, we have a lot of small service businesses. A guy will drive his personal vehicle to work and he'll jump in his work van and go out. The, most of the work is done off the site by the service guys. They don't, they don't have a unit big enough to bring a lot of equipment or people into their product. It's not a point of sales. It's a point of workplace. So during the daytime, they probably will leave their personal vehicles there while they're in their service vehicles. And then vice versa, after hours or on the weekends, they'll take their personal vehicles, go, go home with them, and leave the service vehicles such as they have, you know, there until they're ready to use them again.
There is no covered parking available for the service vehicles over the weekend or anything like that?
No, sir, there's not.
There's going to be buildings associated with these parking spaces that are rentable or I'm assuming that's what you're doing?
Well, yeah, we're building a small-user rental office flex space, yes. And, and a guy will typically want to leave his car there or, or his van over there parked in front of his unit until he comes back to work the next day.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thought he was our guru.
I mean, this is an example of, I took these pictures on this past weekend on one of our projects in Martin County. And, and it's not like, it does not become a, a busy parking lot. It's just the occasional vehicles that get left there.
As you just showed, the vehicles off to the, not the vehicles closest to the building, but look how they're on a, on a grass, grass area.
That particular project had a, a grass parking area across from the, one of the buildings. And yes, it does show some parking there. Our trailer parking, we isolate to specific areas and would buffer those if necessary. We try to control that very closely. This is a different project. It just shows weekend parking.
Individuals who have their homes, is that their homes built opposite where that weekend parking is occurring?
That, that particular project is, as this one is, is in a, a little industrial park. There's no, no residential adjacent to that particular project.
From a land development code standpoint, because this parcel- From a land development code standpoint, because this parcel is fronted by a public roadway, behind it is residential, so we're sort of battling two different concerns here. The point planning and zoning is trying to make is that by land code, we wouldn't allow continuous parking on a regular basis with a vehicle with branding on it. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if we can get back to the pictures that show the buffer on the east side of the site, there's a substantial pine tree and opaque fence buffer between the building and the homes to really visually block the view of the development site.
So the hope would be that evening hours, we would request or I guess require by code, any service vehicles be parked behind the building?
Correct.
About lighting on the site?
Lighting would default back to the Land Development Code, which doesn't allow light trespass away from the site to begin with. And so the basic code language would address the site lighting issue.
Have there been any letters or any response from the public on any of this?
Received one phone call last week, one of the residents in the subdivision to the east there, they just had a question about what was being changed there. They were concerned that a developer was going to do apartments, and obviously that's not the subject of the change, so they did not really have concerns about what was being proposed as far as the clarification regarding the uses and the performance of the undertaking. So that was the only comment we received.
Questions or comments from members of the board? Is there any further questions or comments from the public?
Okay.
Come up, sir.
I'm Willie Dixon from the Alameda North area and South area. We have some concerns about the project.
Excuse me, could you give your address as well?
Pardon me?
Your address?
1405 Alameda Drive North.
Okay.
These other gentlemen here are on the Alameda North Street, which we are very concerned because we are in impact of most of where the project is going to be located at. And my concern is a whole lot of things as far as, he mentioned the buffer, the buffer does absolutely nothing for the community right now. And to actually put more traffic in that area, it's going to create more problems for our community. We can't hardly get out of, on Alameda now for the Providence Reserve projects and a new Phase Three that's coming in now. So the traffic is outrageous as far as our area and our street is concerned. We have a lot of children, there's a lot of senior citizens in this area that can absolutely do nothing as far as safety-wise. And when you start parking vehicles in an area that's in a neighborhood, it's going to create a lot of vandalism. My question to the builders, is there going to be any security in that area that'll maintain a 24-hour security? Because right now, as far as the industrial park is concerned, most of the, 99% of the businesses are back there now are closed during the night. Only one that's far as Pepperidge Farm, that's now Campbell, that's open 24 hours. And we were talking about vehicles being left there, stored there, is, all it's going to do is just create some vandalism as far as thieves climbing the fences and coming into our yard. We already have that problem now. And for you to park commercial vehicles or vehicles that guys or companies work and you're going to park those vehicles, all it's going to do is create more traffic. We have a lot of area now in that area where we're getting kids, younger kids from the areas that are walking the streets in our yards. And to actually put something there that's tempting to them, they're going to try it. They're going to try it. So my question is, it's confusing to us why you want to bring an area, I mean, a business or a parking area, industrial area in a, basically partially residential area.
I was up at a three-minute limit, so that was, okay. Are there any other comments from any of the other gentlemen?
JP Dixon, 1422 Alameda Drive North. That buffer that they are mentioning that's been there for years, when Land Rover moved over, we can actually hear the car wash, just a simple wash. So what I'm worried about is the buffer that you're saying that existing that you're going to add to. We already hear the car wash, so I don't know what kind of business it is that's going to, that you're going to put there that's not going to have any mechanical or working there or trailers or whatever you're going to have. What's the process? What's going to be there that's going to add to what we already hear? Pepperidge Farm have silos. We actually hear the silos. So the buffer is still the issue with our community. So don't allow such business to come into our neighborhood again that's going to keep us up at night.
I just want to reiterate that these are small user office warehouses, they don't generate a lot of traffic, they don't generate a lot of noise, they don't generate a lot of vibration. The units simply aren't big enough to house the equipment that would bother these gentlemen. It really is, it really is a pretty benign project. We've built close to 500,000 square feet of it, we've never had a complaint from a neighbor.
Something that may be helpful is after we go through and take a look at the allowed and prohibited uses in the list, and if you gentlemen, you know, would like to respond and see what is allowed and what is not allowed, that may help address some of your concerns after we have a chance to go through the conditions and view those on the screen.
Before we get to the conditions, is there anticipated work hours or do you guys regulate times associated with these at all?
No, but there's very rarely, rarely anybody there after hours.
These are small units, what is the typical square footage for a unit?
I think this project would have anywhere from about 700 to maybe 900 square foot.
So these are generally small, maybe contractors, other users?
Small contractors, small service people, a guy who you need to fix your garage door, you know, things like that.
Yeah, these are not big manufacturing users like Pepperidge Farm. I mean, they're not going to be, likely not open on nights and weekends.
I have another question, the gentleman talked about traffic. Correct me if I'm wrong, but he addresses on Alameda is not, is not interstate, correct? Isn't the, doesn't Alameda enter onto, is it problems?
Providence Road, yes.
This, this would not increase the traffic getting in and out of their subdivision at all?
There's no driveway connection between this development and Alameda. And then just for additional, further clarification, the city does have an improvement project for Providence Road that's scheduled for fiscal year 2027 that would more towards the north end of the corridor, add some turn lanes as you get closer to Interstate Drive and between Interstate Drive and Griffin Road, that should help incrementally improve the operations of that overall corridor. So there is a larger project that actually runs from Griffin all the way down to Kathleen Road that is under design right now, is funded for construction. And so that should hopefully help offset any additional traffic from Providence Reserve and the remainder of this development, which has, the zoning's been in place generally for this business park for well over 20 years now.
Timing wise, what, how does, how does the timing of what you just described correlate to the completion of that project?
I mean, I'll ask the applicant in terms of timing of construction and when they plan to open, but I'm, very likely would be after they're up and operational.
I would think we would have a few months left to do site planning and get the approvals and then take most of the year to build it. So we would be into 2025, getting up closer to the 2027 improvements.
So the pictures that you showed us, I'm looking at the Google aerial picture and I'm looking at the tree buffer around that community. And I'm trying to figure out how, is it going to be parking that's abutting that buffer or is it going to be the back of the buildings with the parking facing inward?
It's parking, it's parking and a front elevation that faces that buffer.
So there are going to be parking and they're going to see cars and vehicles?
Yes, but there are no overhead doors and no service drives facing or adjoining the buffering. We've designed it so each building faces outward and the service area and the overhead doors are hidden from both Interstate and from the community to the east of us.
And were you planning to enhance that buffering so those residents didn't see all those vehicles?
We have no problem with that, we haven't gotten that far down the road yet.
The current PUD does have a 40-foot wide buffer along the perimeter next to residential there. And that buffer consists of a six-foot high fence and I believe three rows of pine or cedar trees that were planted there. So if you go back to the photos, you can see those trees are quite mature there. So that's going to be maintained, they're not going to be impacting that buffer there, that's already required through the PUD. After the mayor's go through the changes here to the conditions. And this is an older PUD, a lot of the language is rather dated, so the purpose here today is related to sort of update and clarify just this particular property, what they can do here for what they're requesting. And so the first change, the mayor should go through it, what was written right here, this was added last week after the packet went out, so this is not in your packet here, but this clarifying under the prohibited uses here would be any type of heavy equipment, heavy machinery, vehicle repair, that would not be permitted on this property here since it's next to residential. And the mayor should go forward here.
So the next, number six is the uses specifics for lots five through seven. In addition to the above uses, the following uses shall be permitted on portions of lots five through seven as described in Exhibits B1 and B2, provided that all activities occur inside enclosed building. Industrial type service establishments level one, industrial uses level one. In addition to the performance standards specified in Section J, all uses on lots five through seven shall be subject to the following restrictions. So no outdoor storage of warehouse wholesale trade goods and equipment, building materials, scrap, chemical containers, or materials. No automotive recreational vehicle or mobile home service and repair-related uses. No recycling or waste collection uses. No outdoor manufacturing. No uses requiring outdoor cutting of tile, stone, or granite, or other construction materials. No uses requiring the use of an aciderator. No propane gas filling or storage. No bulk storage of any hazardous materials as defined under NFPA 400 Hazardous Materials Code. No bulk storage of any flammable or combustible liquids as defined by NFPA 30 Flammable and Combustible Liquids Code. No household mini-storage or vehicle storage except work vehicles and trailers for tenants may be parked in designated spaces to the rear of the buildings. And the highlighted red, as Matt mentioned, is an adjustment from what is in your packet.
Yes, and the applicant earlier, they're asking that that last section, that rear buildings be removed from condition to here. So that's what they asked for.
Which section?
Under X here?
Yes. Under X in the section, number six.
The applicant's request is to delete the verbiage starting with "to the rear of the buildings." So that would be everything up to, in fact, I'll just go ahead and read it. No household mini-storage or vehicular storage except where vehicles and trailers for tenants may be parked in designated spaces. That's under the applicant's request.
Just to reiterate, that is not the staff's opinion, we think that it should state "to the rear of the buildings"?
Correct.
What's on the screen is what we're recommending.
So if you had a paying contractor in there, he's got a couple of vans that he took to job sites and they, full graphics on the vans, those could be parked anywhere on the property?
Under our recommended conditions, as shown on the screen, they would be on the, at the rear of the buildings, not in front.
Interior to the two buildings.
Oh. It would be at the rear of the buildings, but we would say interior or...
Rear of the buildings, but not in the interior. It would be between...
Or behind.
The building and the buffer.
The two buildings, they back up together.
Correct. They would not be allowed along the frontage there along Interstate Drive.
What about the rear building, the building that faces these residents?
The main issue, and this is something that I'll ask is, is that I think right now there's a fence in place, we've got the vegetation in place, so visually there should be screening between the neighborhood and the site. Now in terms of noise, light, other issues, I don't think there's really any difference between having the commercial vehicles parked in the back and personal vehicles parked in the back. You're still going to have people coming in and starting up and, you know, moving them around, and so that's a whole different, whole different issue than the visual buffer, buffering on that east side of the site.
Residents would prefer not to be looking out their windows and seeing commercial vehicles parked there.
Correct.
Under this, they very well may be, if the buffer is not...
The PUD does not currently have any limitations on parking in the rear like that. I mean, they have the buffer requirement, so the buffers tend to address any impacts from both the use and any ancillary uses like parking, so that's not currently restricted in the PUD.
I have a quick question for the applicant. You're talking about businesses and tenants like a garage door company or a cabinet supply company, is that what you're referring to?
Small electrical contractor, small general contractor, small plumbers, small service people for garage doors. I mean, we get, they call it flex space because it's adaptable to so many different uses that people that work in your neighborhoods every day. And most of the work goes on off-site. They come to your house, they come to your job, they do, you know, they just need a place to operate out of.
There's one in Orlando that I've visited, so I'm familiar. I just wanted to get clarification if that is indeed what you're proposing.
That's the way they operate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So you gentlemen are in accord with the conditions that the city has suggested?
For that last one?
Except for X. And that's understood between the city and you? What part of X is cut off and what isn't? Because you're revising X, I take it, from what we see there.
As staff supports X, as it's currently written, and I believe the applicant would like to see the last five words removed, to the rear of the buildings removed from that, from that condition.
Let me ask you a question, if we've got a PUD condition that differs from code, how is that handled by code enforcement?
Usually the PUD ends up, you know, that's more specific and that will end up kind of superseding, but I think it does open up issues for future... But I think it does open up issues for future, you know, future questions about this specific language related to the land development code as it exists today. So there are, there are going to be other questions about why that language is in there on other sites.
Okay, then that being the case, do we have a motion to approve the requests of the applicants?
Like a...
Yes, we are. I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Generally, we limit it to one time up here. I'll defer to the, to the board.
I, I...
To the department, excuse me.
I, I would, I would just say that based on the review of the conditions, you know, at your, at your pleasure, it'd be good to hear their reaction to those, to those conditions.
That's your response to the conditions that have been stated up here, sir? If you, if you have a response to the conditions, you come up and respond to that. Otherwise, we can't.
If you would like to come up and speak in response to what the changes that were proposed, you're welcome to do so.
My concern is, my concern is...
If you could go to the podium, please. There we go. Thanks.
My concern is that it's, it's constantly mentioned about the buffer that is existing. Those pine trees, that buffer, they're balding, they are dying. So what are we going to do? What are they going to do? Because we already have issues with noise. So you're saying the existing buffer that you're going to add to it, is it something that we are not seeing that you said that you was presenting that we don't see as far as projecting a picture or something? Is it something?
If we can go back to the pictures real quick. The, the buffer is, we understand it would be on the left, the left side of that, that open grassed area.
I know exactly what. I live right there. Those, from my patio, I can see inside my house, I can look over the fence. From the ground, I can't. So therefore, whatever goes in the back of my house is going to be just like that to me. So I'm not saying you shouldn't be, I'm just saying, what are you going to protect the neighborhood from what's already there? Those trees have been there 30 years. So they're dying. So the existing buffer is not working.
It doesn't say in the PUD about what the buffer has to be. I mean, I'm looking at this and maybe I'll look at the long...
Yes, I know, maybe scroll down here in the, your packet, under the planning and design standards and under condition five.
Yeah, it says, "A 40-foot wide buffer shall be maintained, blah, blah, blah." And it has to have landscaping, stormwater retention, so forth and so on. It, it reads to me that the developer is going to be required to alter that buffer to be 40-foot wide, to put a fence in there. That buffer shall contain a solid decorative buffer fence.
And something that we can, we can offer is, is if there's dead plant material and if there are portions of that buffer that are not being maintained, that is something that is part of our site plan review and our Parks and Recreation Department can, can, can take a look at those, and this is something that we would do as part of our standard site plan review process, is required that any dead plant material or material does not comply with a PUD condition or code be replaced and restored to acceptable condition. So that might be, would you see that as something that would, that would help satisfy that issue if the dead plant material, if that's the, the issue, that that is replaced as part of the, the site development?
Sir, the, the difference is, it's been there all these years and you never did anything yet. So what's going to make you start doing it? The new building?
I think the gentleman's concern is, is will we maintain the buffer? And the answer is yes, we will.
Do you consider maybe updating the buffer? The PUD standards, they're about 30 years old. The current land development code's very different. Typically for industrial, like next residential, we would have the eight-foot-high fence or wall, could be some type of precast, maybe a comply a wall weather thing. Would you consider a more updated buffer like that, something that would better address the neighbors' impacts?
Yes, we, we initially decided to try and pitch maintaining the buffer because we thought that's what the city wanted.
Yes.
And, and the neighbors. And we don't mind enhancing it, we don't mind maintaining it, we don't mind adding to it as long as, you know, we still get the use of the property.
Okay. So that would be an option if you want to amend the conditions to require the type of site plan review, that they work with Parks and Recs to reevaluate and update the buffer there next to those three lots.
One other thing that I want to break up. There's no telling what a business owner will bring to their establishment. Let me give you a good example. We have a marijuana plant back there now. We were not told that it was going to be there. We went through changes daily with marijuana issues in the air in our neighborhood. We were told by the city, several occasions, the city would come out, I would be out of my yard working and they would ask me, "Are we going through any problems?" I'd call the city to say, "Yeah, are we smelling marijuana coming from that plant?" But the problem was, they say it's supposed to have a furnace in there to dissolve it before it gets in the air, but it has never happened. We still have that problem. So all we're saying is there's no telling what I, if I purchase a facility there, there's no telling what I would bring or what I would get would have in my building. We're just concerned about our community and that buffer is doing nothing now.
The city, as part of this, and of course, happy agree to by the, by the applicant, put specific requirements as to a buffer to address the concerns of these gentlemen and their neighbors.
Because as Mr. Lyons stated, that if we had some language, we can work with the city attorney's office to make sure we get the language right, subject to approval by the board, but we could default back to the current land development code and make sure that we have a minimum eight-foot wall or eight-foot opaque fence between the site and the adjacent neighborhood and ensure that the vegetative buffer is compliant, is an enhanced to better comply with current land development code standards and working with our Parks and Recreation Department. So I think if...
That would be in the conditions themselves.
We can add that into the final conditions that are transmitted to the applicant, subject to approval by the planning and zoning board.
Address your gentleman's concerns.
Because the buffer, the buffer, now there's pine trees back there. Those pine trees are taller than some of the telegram poles. They're doing absolutely nothing.
Well, they're talking about putting in a, a, not concreteness, but some sort of material.
Nowadays, the, the land development code, the type of trees are very different. We look more for few blockage and coverage. So the trees that were recommended 30 years ago, we, we probably would not approve those because as, as the neighbors indicated, those grow very high, they're not very effective of actually blocking at the ground level. So the, the current code would require very different species there. So we, we would leave that to Parks and Rec to determine what would be appropriate, but certainly, you know, those trees are at the end of their life and need to be replaced, updated, that would be intended on this condition to the...
And in addition, you're saying you would have basically a wall there? Is that...
Saying an eight-foot-high fence or wall. Yes.
So basically, they'd be replacing what's planted there that you're, you gentlemen are so concerned about, that is outdated, that's 30 years old, plus a, a wall to act as a, as a buffer in the same spot along with any new vegetation that you all would plant.
We tried to get, we tried to get the city to give us some help on the wall. The city said they had absolutely nothing to do with that buffer. It was maintained by a company out of Tampa. The last hurricane we had, we had fence torn down and it took us a month, months, to get somebody to come and repair. They came and repaired it with used material that's about to fall down now. You guys need to send some of your, the, the code enforcement guys out there and look at the debris that's falling out of these pine trees. That's, they just push aside the fence and leave it. So we don't want to create another problem when we already have one. If we, if we can see some light on what's going to be done before it's done and it's maintained by the city, or the cities, they have code enforcement in there to tell us where we have a vehicle in our yard that needs to be moved because it doesn't have a tag, but then nobody addresses the problem behind that buffer.
And I may be wrong in what I'm assuming from what I'm hearing from the gentleman here. The department is separate from, of course, this board. We, we don't have the power the department has, but what I am, what I am interpreting from what you're saying is, A, you're going to get rid of some of this foliage, as you gentlemen say, is 30 years old and shouldn't be there in the first place. And B, you're going to be putting up a, a solid wall in addition to new foliage to try and address the problems.
Our understanding is that that buffer was built by the developer of the business park 30 years ago, and then this property's never been developed. So it is likely that maintenance has probably suffered within that buffer. But certainly with a new occupant here coming in, they would be responsible for maintaining their portion going forward. And as they indicate, they are willing to consider updating that and removing any dead trees there.
Who would be responsible for the update? Would it be the city or these gentlemen?
It would be the, the developer here today would be for updating that.
So then it's a question of, you gentlemen, that would be one of the conditions that would be listed there, if you gentlemen are in accord with those conditions.
Sure, to the extent that the buffer's on our property, we're fully, fully prepared to maintain it.
I'll let you address it to these gentlemen. You can, you can express it better than I can.
And, and so I, that would, that would, you know, getting Mr. Lyons' point is, is that would get you a buffer that, that meets today's standards much better than what was done 30 years ago. You're going to end up with a taller fence. You may still see the building from, you know, if you've got a second story, you may still see the building from your second story, but that would be the case anyway because the way the current PUD is written, this isn't, this isn't a new use that's allowed on this property. This is a modification of an existing allowed use in the PUD. So to me, with the restrictions of the uses that are included in the revised language in addition to the language related to the enhanced buffer to better comply with the land development code, including an eight-foot-tall fence or wall along the perimeter, I believe that that would address the comments, or at least the substantive part of your comments related to the impacts to the, to the neighborhood in the, in the, in the view.
One other question. Have any of you guys been in that area?
I have.
Behind that buffer? Did you walk behind the buffer?
It would be private property. That would be the residential side.
On me?
On your side of the, of the property? On your side, sir, the, the residential east side?
Is it what?
You said behind, you mean on your side of the buffer?
Both sides.
Okay. And we've seen it from the public side, from, from Interstate Drive, but we've not seen both the other side.
Take a, take a little break and go out and look out there and see what you think.
We would allow it.
And that's, and that's where these conditions through the site plan review process would clean up. If there's debris back there, that would have to get cleaned up, plant material, the wall itself. So there are, there are things that would be done as part of the site planning process to address kind of what you've been telling us about the, the general condition of the plant material, the debris, and just the general maintenance of that overall buffer area.
And you're saying that you would do something with the exist, existing fence that's there?
Existing fence would be replaced with an eight-foot-tall fence or wall. And the details on that would be worked out during site plan review, but the language that we'd work on with the city attorney's office would be clear in terms of the buffer and, and the, and the wall height.
And...
Correct. That would be part of a documented letter that would be sent to the, to the, to the applicant following and depending on the board's action today.
We, we have no problem with growth. Don't get us wrong. But we live in that community. It's where we're going to spend the rest of our lives, in that community. And we want to live comfortable.
I think...
I think, I think we all want to do the same thing. We want to live comfortable in our area and we want to be able to go to sleep and rest until the next day.
I have a question. Are there restrictions on the size of those buildings that they tentatively want to put up there?
35 feet.
If we can go back to the, if they're in the, the written conditions?
I just think the, the conditions are only the changes.
The existing code is...
Because this is, this is the plan development and if you look on, if you look on, it's in number two, under the planning and design standards for the plan development, the number two, it has, you know, block coverage and then it also has, number three has minimum setbacks and parking and all the...
Mm-hmm.
And number, I'm sorry, and number one also has like the height.
Currently limited to 35 feet. I believe this is going to be a one-story development. What's proposed today is that 35 feet would typically be a three-story building.
The 65 feet was for the silos and that's not what they're...
Just, just so you all know, our product is 18 feet tall on the high side.
So just, if we can just summarize before we have a mo, any kind of motion. You gentlemen are okay with the conditions as proposed today with the change that the city will be making with your assistance and all the other conditions that are there?
We're in full agreement that we'll be responsible for maintaining the buffer on our property and the, any other city conditions. We would love to get it removed, that the vehicles have to be parked at the rear, but other than that, we're fully prepared to go forward.
How does the setback, the rear setback of the buildings from where the fence will be, what is that just?
35 feet.
35 feet is the minimum north of...
The buffer's currently at 40 anyway, so it will be beyond the 40-foot length.
Okay. Is there room behind the proposed building between proposed building and the buffer to park cars?
Yes, there is.
Okay. So why do you want it in the front? What's, what's the reasoning that you want to change?
The building, the storefront of the building actually points toward the buffer because it was requested that all of the service activities where trucks would come in and drop things off and so forth would be between the buildings where, you know, you would have noises potentially.
Okay. So you're sort of between the rock and the hard spot. You either, you know...
You can't put them in the back and the only place to really put them is in the front, which faces the interstate.
Right.
That's correct.
And that's what you're requesting.
The change that you're requesting is to be able to move it towards the rear of the building.
The building to the, the street side. That is the only change. Pardon?
Or both sides. The front side of, yeah, the front side of each building, in other words, the storefront side of the building.
And that faces interstate?
Faces the buffer.
Correct. The storefront would face both towards the east, towards the neighborhood and the buffer, as well as towards Interstate Drive. And our request is, is that the, the commercial vehicles only be placed in the area either within the, the service bay area or behind the eastern building that faces the buffer.
In other words, between the two buildings?
Correct. Or, or, or east of that point.
The two building, I guess that's where I'm confused. Are the two buildings parallel to one another and perpendicular?
Can you go to the shot of the diagram of the buildings and the parking spaces, please?
Our only restriction would be against having the commercial vehicles parked between the building fronts and Interstate Drive.
Okay. So are you saying that the parking spaces on that bottom building would be flipped to the interior and the, the parking spaces at the top building would be flipped to the interior? Is that what you're saying?
No. And under, under this scenario, the commercial vehicles would park towards the, at the, to the bottom of the longer east-west facing building.
You're talking about down here?
Correct. Or in the, in the back, behind the other, the other building.
Wouldn't it be better to allow the commercial vehicles to park on the Interstate Drive side rather than where the residents can see them from their kitchen window?
The, in terms of the buffer, if the buffer conditions carry forward, then it's, then, you would not be able to see the commercial vehicles from the neighborhood. And in terms of noise, there's no difference in noise impacts of somebody coming in and clicking their car, their car door, you know, at 6:00 AM versus a commercial, a commercial vehicle leaving at 6:00 AM. The issue would be the sign code.
I disagree with that. I'm just thinking of a way to keep these commercial vehicles a little bit further away from the residents and have it be happy for everybody.
Because the way that it's situated on the lot, that parcel will be like this. So, that long bay of parking spaces will directly abut the back of their houses.
Earn is, from a signage standpoint, Chuck, and just trying to, you know, not, and in date, Interstate Drive with 100 different businesses advertising off the side of their vehicles, is there a way to mitigate with additional buffer on the interstate side so that it's, you know, sort of blocking those advertisements?
I think we could, we could take a look at additional hedges and buffering to further hide the entire site from Interstate Drive. And also maybe even restrict the commercial vehicles against the building and not?
You're talking about up here? That you buffer this and allow them to park up there?
Or, or actually?
Park here and here and enhance the buffers against the matter of fact.
We're also not voting on a site plan, right?
Right, right, right.
So, so this is just a?
I think going back to the photos the applicant showed, I think our team was too full. We, we don't want the, the work trailers. Have you seen those? Those really do not belong out front. Those should be probably parked back there. They have the occasional work van out front. I mean, I, I don't think that was her concern here. But we, we don't want the, the furniture cluttered with a bunch of trailers and work vehicles there. It's just not a good look for the, for the park there.
Like anywhere else, you don't want, you know, free signage with vehicles that just sit out there and perhaps not ever used. And I understand that's not the intent, but it could happen, right? So, I think that's where city code would, would imply. But I also get the, the side of the neighbors. You don't perhaps want all of the commercial vehicles in the back. So, is there a, a happy medium? And I think that might be that perhaps enhanced buffer up at the front.
I think the, the enhanced buffer, as long as you would not be able to see the commercial vehicles from, and, and, and we restricted the commercial vehicles to be against the building, that we could work out something. And ultimately, that's another site plan question where we look at what, what spaces are designated. Part of what we wanted to do is make sure that it was clear as part of the zoning and also make it clear in case we needed a, a code enforcement review that this is what is allowed, this is what is not allowed. And so that was our intent with this, with this discussion.
I, I would say at this point, can we delay taking a vote on this until you can, we can get all of these questions answered? And, and we know exactly what we're voting on then?
Not a clear plan of exactly what's going there and who's going there.
I think to have some artist renderings, a little bit more in-depth review of the buffering that we're all talking about, so that we can be sensitive to the neighbors, still accomplish what the, the property owner wants, the developer wants, and fit within the code, the city's code.
That would certainly be the board's pleasure, and I would look to the applicant to see if that's something that's acceptable to them. But I think that would help answer a lot of the questions, particularly related to the, to the commercial vehicle parking.
I would love to see the project move forward. Until we get the uses defined, we can't do any real site planning or we can't hire our third-party consultants because we don't know whether or not we're going to be approved by the board. I would prefer to have some kind of a statement in there that the parking is to be at the rear of the buildings or such other places as the, the board designates during the site plan process.
Or acceptable to staff during, during the site plan process. I'd be completely fine with that.
I mean, there is designated use. You just want it different.
I just want to try and adjust the parking, that's all. We're happy with the uses that staff has worked out with us.
I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with, with amending condition 10 to say, you know, at the rear of the building or other location determined to be acceptable by city staff at the time of site plan review. And so it may be helpful if we went back through?
Parking in the rear of the building is my big sticking point. That's the thing. The parking in the rear of the building.
If we go through and we just take a look real quick. And then what we can do is summarize the two changes beyond what's shown on the screen. Is related to the parking, is that for condition, for condition 10, we would just add language that says spaces to the rear of the buildings or other designated, designated locations acceptable to staff as determined at the time of site plan review. The other would be an amendment to the buffer, buffer language that says that we would require an eight-foot-tall wall or opaque fence and, and buffer in compliance with the land development code, enhanced buffer in compliance with the land development code. And that would be addressed by the city's Parks and Recreation Department at the time of site plan review.
So, is the total of that fence buffer subject to parks, Parks and Recs?
In terms of the vegetation and the actual plant material, that would be subject to Parks and Recreation's determination. They're definitely the plant, the plant experts. And so what we would do as part of city staff and as part of the building permit review for the fence is we would review the material and the height of the fence to make sure that it's compliant with the, with the requirement of the PUD.
What about the length of?
The length of the fence would be the, along the entire, the, the entire perimeter of this site, abutting the, the adjacent neighborhood.
So, if that, if the board is in agreement, oh, yes, sir.
We would like to at least get some kind of documentation before this is approved or to the community. We need to know, there's been so, some changes going to be made that we absolutely have no documentation of what's going to be done. We need to get something beforehand before, we welcome change. But we need to know what's going to be changed that has not already been changed.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think there may be a way to provide information on what would be approved, but it would not be subject to a public hearing process. I mean, it's really, is it, does it comply with the code or does it not comply with the code? Because right now, there are uses that are allowed in this PUD that somebody could come in and develop today, and as long as they met the PUD language today, they don't have to touch the buffer. And so I think what we're doing is, is we're trying to be responsive, but also we don't want to open it up because I think at some point, it becomes very subjective in terms of what is a, what is an acceptable buffer and what is not an acceptable buffer. So, if we can keep it to the height of the, the height of the wall and the plant material and compliance with the code, we provide certainty to the applicant and to the neighborhood as to what we're, we're going to allow. And that's subject to a technical review at the time of site plan submittal. Certainly, if you have questions, you know, we can, you know, if you have, you can certainly engage the case planner and, 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 you know, as we get information in the draft site plan, we can share that with you in terms of what we're reviewing and any comments that we have. But it would not be subject to a public review or a public vote or anything along those lines.
Everyone will have a form of documentation what the plan is. And as you said, there might be something that, that might have to change, but the, the general gist of it should remain as what's in there. Now, do we, we're, we're approving everything. If we approve here, it is subject to?
What we would do is, is make sure that in terms of the conditions that are listed, plus the, the changes to the two conditions that we just discussed, we would draft language, share that with the city attorney's office to make sure that the language is correct and, and definitely meets the, the spirit and the intent of the PNZ's decision, whatever it is today. And Mr. Landback, do you have any concerns with that approach?
I do not. As long as it's consistent with what the board recommends, and then everybody's on notice of it. And then whenever we transmit the letter with the conditions, we'll, we'll have that language in there. And my only, only question, Chuck, was in terms of referencing to site plan for the buffer that's currently in the land development code, are we looking at changing, adding that as a new section within the conditions? Or is that going to be a modification to number five, which is required buffer area?
That would be a modification to, to section five.
Okay. Specific to this, lots five through seven?
Five through seven.
So, it's not the entire PUD, it's just these?
Are we going to phrase whatever we're putting in there?
Are you entertaining motions?
I'm entertaining a motion at this point, yes.
I'll motion to approve as presented with modification to item six CX, adding the language to maybe parked and designated spaces to the rear of the buildings or in an agreed-upon space as discussed with staff at the time of plan or site review. And then modification to the D Planning and Design Standards, number five, required buffer area specific to lots five through seven, updating that to the latest current buffer standards specific to an eight-foot-high wall and view coverage. Aye.
Reposed.
Roll call.
Carrie's four to three.
We'll call for the record, so.
Aye.
Fails at three to three.
We don't want to hold these folks up. We want to make sure we address the concerns of these gentlemen. I don't know how we can put that in writing because we don't have anything. What we would like to do, but as much, so we could give them as much assurance and them as much assurance, what we, that what they are looking for is going to be addressed. That's why I don't know if there's any way to let these gentlemen be able to start on their project. I understand they want to get started. By the same token, these gentlemen have concerns that have never been addressed in the past. And I can understand their concerns that they wouldn't be addressed in, in the future on this thing. So, that's why I think we need to have something there that can ensure to them that, that the city will be addressing these issues. As, in the mode that you suggested, Chuck, doing exactly the things that you suggested there. But I think you all would like something in writing to that effect. And I want, I'm certain that you gentlemen would like something in writing so you can begin your project.
The best solution I could think of as, as staff is, is that if in addition to the revised conditions that, that are provided to the applicant, that those also include a cross-section of the buffer to show generally the existing, the existing buffer area and the enhancements that would be made, including the eight-foot wall or fence. And that would be something that would be attached to the modified PUD conditions to illustrate exactly what we would be enforcing at the time of site plan.
So, if those, those conditions are not being addressed then, at the time of site plan, then?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's always been the intent is, is the, the, the PUD conditions would be implemented at the time of site plan approval. So, that would be still something that would occur after the PNZ action, but it would be a cross-section or an exhibit that would help illustrate the, the buffer that we're talking about here. Because that seems to be, at this point, the key issue.
Oh, I, I guess I'm at, maybe I'm confused, but the city code states that the vehicles cannot be on frontage of Interstate Parkway, correct?
Correct.
So, they would have to be on the interior of the parcel. And the way that the parcel is looking to be site-planned, all those vehicles would be directly abutting the, those residential homes, correct?
Would be directly abutting the buffer that, that is 40 feet from?
I understand. 40 feet is not that big. My contention is that the developer, while he controls who rents that space, he doesn't necessarily control their vehicles. And if there are trailers and, and commercial vehicles that have backup beepers that can go off at 6:00 in the morning, they're going to hear it. And they're going to hear it all along that back fence. That's my issue. If there was a way that we can get that parking in the interior of the lot, but not abutting their residences, I think that would be more of a, a plan that would, everybody would be on board with because you'd have a sound buffer, buildings, fence, vegetation.
Since there isn't a, a site plan for the buildings, do you see any issue of trying to concentrate the, the commercial parking in between, in between multiple buildings so that they're not fronting the Interstate Drive or the, or the buffer adjacent to the neighborhood?
The central section was to be for service vehicles to pull up, and these could be larger vehicles. If you're parking in there and the units are only 16 feet wide, you're basically blocking every way in and out of the building if they're parking back there.
Physically, there would be no way to do that? Or it'd be very difficult?
Well, it would be easier if we could find a spot to put, let's say, the trailers off to the side or something like that, as opposed to interior to the buildings. And then the other issue was just with, I'm understanding, free advertising on Interstate Boulevard, which I don't know how much that really affects anything, but we could certainly put a buffer on there. You know, if I should take a buffer to block some of that.
Just the buffer along Interstate Drive and limited the amount of commercial parking on Interstate Drive to say 10%. I mean, it's still, I mean, I hate doing this at the, during, during the meeting. But, but, but if we limited the parking, commercial parking to 10% or 25% along that face or those faces of the buildings facing Interstate Drive?
You're, you're referring to restricting the actual signed vehicles?
Exactly. To that, to that area, would you be amenable to that? And would that address your concerns about at least moving as much of the commercial vehicle parking from adjacent to the buffer?
Probably not. I just don't think it's compatible. I don't think it's right for the neighborhood. I think there, that that neighborhood was put there because that was the only place it was meant to be put there. And now it's surrounded by industrial, and I just don't think it's right. I'm sorry.
Also, another concern is that those two streets, Alameda North and Alameda South, I tried to get the city to come in and put no outlet. We get tractors and trailers coming up and they're turning around. We tried to get speed bumps to slow people down that's coming from other areas that think it's a through street. And we couldn't even get speed bumps for the children in the neighborhood. So, it's, it's just, if we can't get something up front to, to say that you're going to, guys are going to do this. And I'm talking, this is, I'm putting this, a lot of this, this thing in our neighborhood is the city's problem. We couldn't even get signs that says no outlet on our street. We couldn't get speed bumps that slowed the traffic down. Traffic doesn't belong in the neighborhood, but because there's no outlet sign that says, letting people know that they, there's no way to get out down there. And when a tractor trailer come down there and try to turn around in the cul-de-sac, he runs in people's yard. We got stakes and things in our yard now to keep people from driving in our grass.
And we can, we can talk with our traffic operations division about that type of signage?
I've already talked that they wouldn't do it for me. I don't know whether they'll do it for you or not.
We'll, 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 we'll give it another, we'll give it another shot.
I just would like to see a little bit more concrete assurance that all those cars, because commercial vehicles will have backup beepers, they're going to leave at 6:00 in the morning, it's, it's, I wouldn't want to see it.
We, maybe there's another approach here, and let me throw this out there. Not to confuse things anymore, but it sounds like that maybe what we're talking about is hours of operation. And if, and, and I'll look to see, you know, your experience and your other developments, if there was language that restricted access, you know, operations on site, you know, say, 7:00 to 9:00, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. or something along those lines, would that?
That's kind of unrealistic. A lot of these tradespeople, I mean, they're, they're hitting the streets at 6:00 a.m. That's not fair to the tradespeople who would eventually be their tenants.
I'd just remind you, I mean, a lot of this is already permitted and much before you today.
today. I mean, they're not requesting anything that that is not already allowed here. So I want to be careful that we focus on the real issue, which appears to be the the effectiveness of that buffer, how it's been maintained, how it's functioning there. So what we proposed there, they would have to upgrade that and reevaluate that there. But beyond that, if some other user wanted to come in tomorrow and propose what's currently out right under the PUD, they could do a more intense actual manufacturing or type of that you used there, so.
Without addressing the buffer.
Yeah, without addressing the buffer. So I just want to be clear where.
Well, at least there's a fence has been added or a wall. That's a little bit better, so. And and is it possible to put in the conditions that the plantings, if some are to be removed, that the plantings that they do replace them with are a little bit more than this high? You know, I mean, because that will take ten years to grow.
We can we can we can work with Parks and Rec on and and the applicant on language that's acceptable on that front. We've got classes of trees and size of minimum heights and diameter. We can work on that. It depends on it depends on the buffer.
On the spaces of the tree, yeah.
Given where we're at right now, just a question to the chair, are are we looking to entertain another vote? Are we gonna request the applicant for site or tentative site plan? What what are we where's the the path forward here?
Without the site plan that we're talking about that can be acceptable to all parties, I don't know how we can make that decision today until you've spoken to Parks and Rec and.
I think the only the only the only option I could see is is if the if the approved, if the if the if the motion in the second included an additional language that required a cross-section for the buffer and the plant material, just so that we've got that included in the PUD and that that be enforced at the time of site plan review, I mean, that's still gonna rely on staff review and the technical review of the Land Development Code, which I completely support. That's that's how the code is written, is to provide that level of certainty. But if we had a cross-section in a buffer that was added in with the language, that gets rid of a level of ambiguity that that could create additional issues at the time of plans review. So I think with that cross-section and of the buffer and the and the and the wall or the the opaque fence, that provides it should provide additional assurance that the neighborhood's concerns are going to be addressed right to that buffer.
In other words, we really have much of a choice.
Yes, I mean, right, right. I I I get that. Is it possible to take the word trailers out? Just.
I don't think so. Commercial, the the commercial, the vans and trucks in the front and and trailers or any other type of equipment in the back, because those aren't gonna you're not gonna have, well, I mean, necessarily, I mean, I think it gets I almost guess, I mean.
I just I just think I'm like, what, I want that directly behind my house? No, of course not.
I mean, I think that I think the PUD language as it's written today could allow more impact of a more impactful site plan than what is being discussed based on the conditions, you know, and so that's where, while it may not be optimal for any everybody involved, I as staff believe that this is something that provides greater certainty to both the applicant and to the neighborhood. It provides a better buffer than what is there today. It does limit uses to what was described by the applicant and ultimately gives us as staff better direction in terms of what to allow and not to allow at the time of site plans in the middle. I think that, you know, with with the addition, you know, the previous the the previous motion, with the addition of a of a cross-section for the buffer and that and that and that wall or opaque fence of eight feet height should provide comfort to those involved here that that the neighborhood is is going to be protected in this process.
At that time? Does it come back to us or no?
This is that would just strictly be an administrative site plan review by staff. And that's not just the planning staff, that's Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and others that are involved in implementing the Land Development Code.
I'm I'm just looking here, and a lot of the the buildings in this business park, whatever you want to call it, these homes predate that.
Neighborhood was definitely here before the before the Interstate Business Park, and 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 most of the buildings in this neighborhood, you know, as far as in the business park, are taller, manufacturing, distribution-type, warehousing-type facilities. And so for what we're looking at for lots five through seven, this is a smaller a smaller site, and and given the the setback requirements and and everything that's already allowed in the code, it's going to drive a smaller building than what exists throughout much of of that of that business park.
I totally understand that, and I my concern was for noise, noise abatement, backup beeps, lighting.
I think we have to be aware of what potential. This this is probably the lesser of evils, and what could be put in there could be much more impactful on these residential, and I mean, I I think it's unfortunate that you have residential and this became an industrial park, but that's there's nothing we can do to change that. And I think to turn this down because there may be trucks backing up that make noise, we may be opening it up to something that's much more that does not have to come for approval and doesn't have to change a thing.
Let me feel better about that. What would come that doesn't need approval? What what could possibly come there that wouldn't need approval from us?
The in in terms of the specific type of it would it would have a a business park look and feel, so you would have store or office fronts facing Interstate Drive and the buffer to the east and into the into the southeast. And so the the truck bays would be internal to the site. You know, the way the conditions are written, there would be no truck bays facing the neighborhood. So that's where most of the noise comes from, and in fact, the 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 building itself would serve as an additional buffer to the neighborhood to the east.
That is the existing.
In terms of what we're talking about here.
She wants to know what could potentially be put in that space if not something like this. That's what she's asking.
Today, and if we can go back through and just real, you know, real quick, look at the conditions, I mean, we would you you would have different types of you would have kind of a a general palette of of industrial light industrial uses that would not be, you know, you would not have automotive repair or you would not have.
But they would have to park their vehicles in the interior of the parcel, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, but and that's what we're changing here. Is that what I'm understanding? So they can park their vehicles on the perimeter of the property.
They would they would they would not be able to park, and what I mean interior, they would not be able to park along Interstate Drive.
By code, it doesn't allow them to.
I understand that. My my the the whole reason that we're making this minor modification is to allow this developer or any developer to allow parking along the perimeter of behind that neighborhood.
Just to add this.
They are they are allowed to do that already.
They are allowed to do that, right. Okay, thank you. Then I can.
The issue does seem to be these eighteen-wheelers or whatever they are that would be parked. And like you, one of you said, they're starting up five in the morning, four in the morning. If if they can be back there to if they can go back there to load their vehicles during the day, isn't there some way to say, okay, after whatever time it is, when those trucks are coming back into the area, whenever they do, they can park at those bays then?
It'd be very difficult to enforce that and outbreak that, and as was discussed earlier, a lot of the trades folks that would be using this this facility, they're they're gonna want to be on the road as early as possible, and and certainly in given given today's environment, you know, they're gonna want to want to work as late as possible as well. And so, I mean, you know, we do have things in the city code, we've got noise ordinances and other provisions in the existing city code, not the Land Development Code, but city code itself, that could address those those issues. I think what we're talking about here is, I mean, and there isn't enough room for an eighteen-wheeler to park on the backside of the site either. So it's it would be utility trailers and those types of things that would be that we that would be parked in the in the.
And I see where these gentlemen, I wouldn't want to have have a truck starting up at three in the morning to wake to wake my family up.
I see it as less of a problem to have trucks, vehicles with graphics on them visible from Interstate Road than I do from the residence homes, which predate this this development by twenty-five years.
I I'll just, you know, it's kind of devil's advocate is is that even personal vehicles, there's no way to regulate the the noise levels.
I get it.
Stereos blaring. I mean, there's a lot of there are a lot of things, and that's why, to me, there's no material difference between a personal vehicle and a commercial vehicle aside from the aesthetics, with the aesthetics, the having them parked interior or to the, you know, at the rear of the site, that's, you know.
I agree. The aesthetics are important if your home is facing it, if if the changes that are being requested by these gentlemen are implemented, be it the wall and various other things as they should be, yeah, I I it may not be as nice to be from an aesthetic standpoint that, but if if you address the other issues and a fat issue is addressed so people don't have to worry about trucks starting up in the middle of the night and going to work, and they do get up then, that's that's. That might be a be a better situation for them if we follow up and if the city follows up on what is being promised to these people.
I I would I I just think that's just very difficult to enforce that type of type of type of, I think it becomes an enforcement issue. I think the conditions as we're, you know, as we're discussing here certainly address the aesthetics issue, the noise issue, there are other avenues to address that outside of the Land Development Code, and and I think that's an issue whether it's a personal vehicle or a commercial vehicle. And and I believe that we could have some additional flexibility to keep as much of the commercial vehicles from parking on Interstate Drive as possible, but we, you know, the way the 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 code or the language as it was revised as was proposed in the original motion would give staff some flexibility to not pile it all back on the on the rear of the of the property. So there may be locations where it's not at the not at the rear, but it may be something where you could technically see it from Interstate Drive, but it's not lining Interstate Drive itself. So I think going back to the original motion with a cross-section of an enhanced buffer to provide additional certainty of what the what that buffer means is 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 I I think to me, that's a much better condition than what exists today in what could be developed today under the current PUD language.
I think going back to earlier, I think someone mentioned maybe the compromise would be for condition ten to eliminate trailers so that they can park the work vehicles in front, but the actual, you know, the work trailers, which are kind of unsightly, those would be screened from view from from the street there. I mean, I think that would be acceptable. Do you agree, Chuck?
I'm not I'm not wild about it related to the Land Development Code, but if that helps us get get to where we need to get, I I can I can I could live with that. I mean, we could we could we could figure some way with enhanced buffering along Interstate Drive, we could figure out some way to to make that work.
Would that work for you?
Would we be then we would remove having vehicles or trailers parking along the property line with the residence, correct?
The trailers would park at the at the at the rear behind the buildings, but the but the actual work vehicles themselves, you know, vans, trucks, things like that, automobiles, could park against or in front towards Interstate Drive with an with an enhanced buffer.
Okay, and then on the property line with the residence?
We'd still be looking at the the enhanced buffer and the eight-foot-tall wall or fence.
And what kind of vehicles parking on that rear building? What would be their front entrance, which actually faces the residence?
I think there's it's double-sided front entrance, and so it's really you got both, but on the backside over there, it would it would be like utility trailers, work trailers, you know, those types of things, so.
Lawn trailers, is that the kind of thing?
Lawn trailers or or, you know, things that that are not, you know, not really typical trucks or passenger vehicles.
Yeah, I think you're a typical contractor guy that has drywall, for example, or other tools, stuff like that, those types of trailers.
Glass, that.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we what we would allow is that in that in that front area between the building and Interstate Drive, we would allow company trucks, company cars, you know, with logos, without logos, to park in that area adjacent, you know, between the building and Interstate Drive. What would be restricted to the rear of the building would be utility trailers.
And rear of the building, do you mean between the two buildings?
To the to the east of the of the eastern building. Adjacent to the adjacent to the buffer.
The building two, if you will, the the one that's more interior.
Correct, it would be between the between that building and the buffer.
Except for we don't have a site plan.
We don't have a site plan, and so this is all theoretical. So what we would say is is that to make it to make it clean is is that the the we would allow, you know, work vans, work trucks, work passenger vehicles to be parked between the between the building and Interstate Interstate Drive and the parking field there. The the, you know, utility trailers, work trailers. Would have to be at the would have no eighteen-wheelers, no eighteen-wheelers, but but the those types of trailers would have to be behind that front building. However it's done, we would deal with that at site plan.
Is it is it, I mean, recognizing that there's a PUD in place without site plan, is that something that this board can request of the applicant? It sounds like there's some concerns about just what this looks like and how.
Absolutely, I think, you know, I mean, it's it's there there will be buildings facing Interstate Drive, and and to me, it's a question on what's in front of those buildings, you know, at least two buildings, just because of the nature of the site, and what's behind those buildings. And 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 so to me, if it's Zone A is facing Interstate Drive would be we would not allow utility trailers, work trailers. Zone B, which is everything behind those buildings, those that's where those types of of that type of equipment would have to be parked.
That's large, somewhat larger vehicles. I don't know how large.
Yeah.
That's where they have to go to load their vehicles anyway, is my understanding, that that's when people would be parking their own personal vehicles.
We just want to we just want to make sure we don't get into a code enforcement issue where we're all of a sudden having to now take a look at vehicle sizes facing Interstate Drive.
I have a question for the board. Is there a motion on the table right now for the discussion? Because you already voted, so if we have a motion on the floor, that would be best for a discussion, but if there's no motion on the floor.
No motion on the floor.
So wouldn't we have to then go with the vote and then send them back to the drawing board? Like, why? We've got other issues here today, so.
What we're looking at at this point is we're looking at the that motion did not pass it because of a three to three tie. So what we're looking at is discussing other other conditions that could be implemented for another vote. So that's all part of the current the current hearing, because this is really where the decision has to be made.
Okay, I understand, but when ours was done, they had to go back to the drawing board and come back again. So why is that not being done right now?
The 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 board, and if you actually, if you could state your name and address for the.
Yeah, my name is Jill, J.I.L.L., Manka, M.A.N.K.A., and I'm at 610 Grasslands Village Circle in Lakeland. So I'm just kind of curious, as I didn't hear a motion on the floor for all the discussions.
It's the it's the board's it's the it's the board's decision, and and the board actually did discuss making the applicant come back in another month. That was not acceptable to the applicant. So because that motion was three-three, that's why we're having a discussion now.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do then, give what are we gonna put on?
Let me let me let me let me let me give it another shot.
Okay.
So what we would say is is that the 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 conditions, the conditions as presented by staff would be recommended for approval with 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 four modifications. The first being condition, condition ten is shown on the screen, is that no household, mini storage, or vehicular storage, except work vehicles, let's see, let's let me look at this real quick, no household, mini storage, or vehicular storage vehicles, okay, no household, mini storage, or vehicular trailers would be allowed to park. or vehicular trailers would be allowed to park between the frontmost building and Interstate Drive. And that no, and that household, mini-storage, or vehiculars, uh, yeah.
I think we can make this cleaner with, and again, by this board, it sounds like the concern is parking at the rear of the building, period.
Period.
Right. So, I'm not making a motion right now, but my opinion would be just to eliminate, no parking at the rear of the building.
Well, the problem is that that's where they're, they're, what I understand, that's where your, your doors are for people to load up and unload.
Safe, front face, front face, access to both sides, correct?
Loading goes in on in between the two buildings.
Loading is between.
Just talking about parking.
Well, okay, but the problem is, where are you going to put those trucks that are unloading, that are not?
Talking about parking, right?
Where, where are you going to park?
Not talking about loading, just talking about parking, overnight.
But the point is, their business, part of their business was to find the people being to unload and load vehicles when they come in with merchandise, whatever they're putting in the warehouse. But they have to have someplace to unload, and they can't, you can't have someone say, oh, park over here and take a hand truck with hundreds of pounds of, of, of equipment or whatever it is, go around, go basically around the block with it. You can't do that. I think, I think the re, having the rear of the building for the, for the, for the larger trailer trucks to unload and load makes a lot of sense to me. Yeah, I, I think if you eliminate that, you're.
There's no large trucks on the site, right?
At any comfort, we very, very rarely ever get a tractor-trailer. These are service vans. These are, these are vehicles that can park in a normal 10-by-20-foot parking spot.
You know, when it, when it's closed, nobody knows. So you don't know what they're going to park back there. You don't know whether they're going to park a tractor-trailer back there, whether it's going to be a small vehicle.
So, so ultimately, we're changing it so they can park at the rear of the building, correct? The rear of the parcel. That's what we're changing. Right?
And that way, we eliminate the problem of vehicles starting up in the middle of the night for most of us, and waking people in their homes up with noise it's created by.
We would not, we would not allow household or mini-storage or vehicular storage.
Except.
And, and then, and we just put a period there, and that work vehicles may park between the office buildings, or the, between the buildings and Interstate Drive, in designated parking areas between the buildings and Interstate Drive, and, and trailers for tenants shall park at the rear of the buildings. To me, that's as clear as we can, we can make that, and, and I think that hits the spirit of what we're all looking for here. The other, the other, the other changes were a cross-section for the buffer and the eight-foot-tall wall or fence, and that that would, that would have to be, the design of that would have to be approved by city staff at the time of site plan supplemental. So really, those are the, those are the three key changes, which are different than the motion that, that failed because of the, because of the tie vote.
I assume, I assume so. So the, I think the big issue is the parking, obviously. So these, these big, these bigger trucks will be at the rear of the building as far as parking, they won't be between the, the buildings and the residential, correct?
They, they, they would be behind, behind the front buildings, and so they would be closer to the resident, certainly closer to the residential, but not within the buffer area. That's why we're enhancing the buffer.
And to play devil's advocate, without a site plan, there could be a single building, yes?
Be a single building.
So, and I just want to note that indicating between buildings may not mean anything, which is sort of my point.
In a building or behind building.
All right. Motion approved as presented by staff with minor modifications to item, what is that, six C X to indicate. Or to remove as requested by, I'll strike that.
I can give it another whirl, see if it helps.
I think he showed you.
Yeah, I'll defer to Chuck's thought here.
So change X to say, no household, mini-storage, or vehicular storage, period. Work vehicles may be parked between the building and Interstate Drive, period. Work trailers, utility trailers for tenants shall be parked behind the building.
I think that has.
That's the ambiguity.
That's.
Can be parked.
Because of the, the positioning of these buildings, for me, that's the ambiguity, the term "behind."
Withdraw my motion at this point.
I thought, I thought that the intent was during the day, no matter what, before these issues arose here, that's where those vehicles were going to go to unload and load.
Correct.
So now we're, we're going to allow them to park back there at, at the end of the day, so that then they aren't interfering, they're not going to be affecting these folks and their residences in the middle of the night.
If, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, let me ask the applicant, is, would you be opposed to adopting the site plan as part of this action? Because that may help clear up a lot of, a lot of questions if, if the plan that's just presented would be.
Could you just state that the roll-up doors will not be along the east property line? Will not face the east property line? Then that would solve the issue of where that store.
I think we already had that in there, but I mean, we can, if we need to make it clear, we can certainly do that.
Right, I'm pretty sure that is the case.
None of those vehicles may, may park between the, the fronts of the buildings and the buffer zone.
All the load-ups, all the loading doors, the high doors, cannot be pointing toward the residence, so that pretty much dictates why that site plan looks the way it does.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, exactly. We would not allow those roll door, roll outdoors anyway to face the neighborhood.
To restate it so it's specific, basically what the chairman said, those, those vehicles may not park at any time between the front of the buildings and the, and the buffer zone.
I still think there's a point here, right? Is there a concern with requirement of the trailers behind the buildings?
So, so I've seen these types of buildings in Orlando, and they're not very pretty. They have chain-link fence around them, they're dirty, there's garbage sitting out in the parking lot of things that those tenants don't want to house, or don't have room to house, and it's very, I, you know, I've seen quite a few of them when we were, because we actually visited one, and I just don't think it's, I, I.
I would say in this, in this instance, again, going back to, there are uses that are currently allowed in the PUD today, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the PUD is covered by a set of covenants that restrict debris and, and aesthetics in terms of the, from the, from the business park side of things. This is within the Interstate Business Park. So I think a lot of those issues that may be occurring at some places in other cities would not be occurring at this location, and the conditions that we're writing in right now, in addition to what's already required in the land development code, would, would prohibit what you're talking about at those other locations.
Who's responsible for that? Is the developer? Is it the tenant? Is, who's responsible for that?
It would be ultimately the, the owner and whatever they have structured with the, with the user. And then, of course, our code enforcement.
Code enforcement, would then, whoever had to be addressed, whether it be the owner or the tenant, ultimately, I would assume it would be the owner if the tenant didn't do anything, because it's air.
Exactly.
All right. You want to try your motion again, with Chuck's language and see how it do, Joe?
Yeah, let me formulate my thought real quick.
That or he's writing a novel.
All right. Um, I, I just want to talk through this first before I entertain the motion or share my motion. So for item X, yeah, as it stands today, it's no household, mini-storage, or vehicular storage, except for, or, excuse me, except work vehicles and trailers for tenants may be parked in designated spaces. What we're talking about, the change to be no household, mini-storage, or vehicular storage, period, and then.
Could we change work vehicles to personal vehicles? Because work vehicles can buy anything, whereas we're talking about.
Well, these are vehicles that are specific to the tenant's work, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so not, not.
I thought, I thought, I thought we were talking about personal vehicles, because if somebody has a pickup truck, a truck or sedan, they drive to work, leave it there, and then they get the truck.
This would be the work, the branded work vehicles that were, that would, that would be, that's really been the discussion here.
Not the big vehicle.
Correct.
And then, again, I'm trying to find the happy medium here, and I hope we're here, but work trailers shall be placed in designated area as identified during site plan review. And here's my thought, is, we're going to share our issues or concerns. I'd like it to, perhaps it's not behind the building, perhaps it's a specified area with enhanced buffer around it, I don't know. And I wish, you know, the, the tenant, or the applicant, yeah, would be able to provide that, but I think there's a little bit of back and forth that needs to happen with staff. So, I, I'd like that to stay as identified during site plan review with considerations for enhanced buffering around that area, specific to those staging of trailers. And I, I think that would get us to the point of overcoming that, that item X. I think at, at that point, everything sort of falls in line, but with those other, you know, three other changes, carry some other thoughts before we get a motion on the floor.
Honestly, and I understand the risk that we take by delaying a vote on this, but I think that there's too many ad hoc changes going on here, and it really needs to be refined further before we're asked to vote on it, because right now, it's very confusing.
Do we have that authority to ask them to come back?
As in continuing this hearing?
Yes.
Until the next meeting? I'd leave it to the discretion of the chair if you think that's appropriate, otherwise we can defer to that previous vote. But if you wish to continue this, the next hearing for staff to provide a more refined conditional, you know, conditions, and, and I believe the applicant had expressed earlier that the development of the site plan is contingent upon the modifications to the conditional use, so it's kind of a chicken and an egg situation. And so requesting, you know, a site plan development is reliant upon these changes here, so.
They don't even know what they're going to be developing to right now.
They have, from what, what they have expressed thus far, it would be based off of the conditions that we're putting forth, and so that's what they're anticipating, and so if we.
Still have to know what that.
If, and, and so, Mr. Chair, if you, if you wish to continue this to the next meeting, staff would have the opportunity to refine the language, and, and we can, you know, go for.
I, I think it would be best for, for everyone concerned, and it's, it's, I know it's, it's, it's tough to delay it for another month, but I don't, I'd hate to see us go into something that, I mean, we were made aware of some things today that I don't think anybody was aware of before this meeting, and I think we need to be fair to all parties' concerns, so I would favor delaying it until next meeting.
Need a motion for that, or no?
We do.
We would need a motion to continue this, and, and, and as in, this is not a, that was not a final action, this is, you know, in terms of, we are continuing the hearing to next month.
Second.
Second.
Better do a individual vote, a voice vote, so to speak.
Aye.
In favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes.
Right, so we will be back again next month. We appreciate everybody's patience.
It'll be on July 17th, will be the next meeting.
Thank you.
Item four. Major modification of planned unit development zoning to allow for the development of a new two-story, 8,000-square-foot office building on property located at 1301 Grasslands Boulevard. Owner, 1301 Grasslands LLC, applicant, Thomas Woodrich, TDW Land Planning, Inc.
Good morning, for the record again, my name is Philip Scare, from Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Just going to wait till our PowerPoint pops up here, and I'll.
Excuse me, can you, can you guys have that conversation outside, please? Thank you.
So much as Mr. Robert stated, this is a major modification of a PUD to allow for the development of a new 8,000-square-foot office building, property located at 1301's Grasslands Boulevard. Site's located at the northwest corner of Kathleen Road and Grasslands Boulevard. This is the, the affected area here in the hatching, and you see the current zoning. This is, excuse me, I said Kathleen earlier, I meant Harden Boulevard, my apologies. Harden Boulevard and Grasslands Boulevard at the northwest corner there. Starting off with the proposed site plan, just to get you oriented, as, as, let's just go back one, you can see the orientation of the office buildings here. So this is that site a little bit closer there, is they're proposing a new 8,000-square-foot two-story office building here with additional parking, because they're taking out some parking with this. So, the next slide shows the, the area of the 8,000-square-foot in blue, and the new parking areas in yellow. Todd Vargo, our senior planner, who's on vacation, did this, did this PowerPoint, and he did a very effective job, and, and the, that color coding here is going to, is going to continue throughout the slides to just give you an indication of when you're looking at the site, where the parking, where the new, where the new building will go. Todd's always doing innovative things in his PowerPoints, and he's, he did a great job with, with this one as well.
I'm to do that on all of them?
I was afraid that was going to happen. Todd does such a good job, they were like, no, we're going to have to do all of our, they're going to have to do this on all the slideshow, so. So this is a elevation of the proposed boulevard, of the proposed, proposed building. This is what you'd see from Harden Boulevard, and then this is looking from like the Grasslands, just looking north. This is a view from the south, as you're looking north of the proposed building. It's a median height of 30 feet, I believe the maximum height is 35 feet at the peak So this is a, looking south along the entrance road towards, towards Grasslands Boulevard, and you can see the yellow area is going to be new parking. This is looking east from the entrance road towards, and you're looking out, the Harden Boulevard is in the background there, that blue shaded area is where the, where the building will go, and then again, you can see the, the area shaded in yellow where the proposed new parking will go.
Is strictly to the side of that, is, is that more office building?
That's the, that's the senior living facility there.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see, I see.
Yeah.
I gotcha.
That's, yeah, this is to the north here, so we're looking, we're looking due east. And this is looking west from the, there's a little knoll right there, there's a little elevated area next to Harden Boulevard. Todd, again, Todd did a great job showing, this will be 10 parking. Todd, again, Todd did a great job showing, this will be 10 parking spaces in the front here, again, that this is where the building is going to go. You can see the senior living facility in the background and the new parking area there in shaded in yellow. This is looking north from that knoll under the, there's a, there's an existing oak tree there, so this is looking north, and again, this is the approximate footprint of where that new building is going to go.
The opposite of the, of the home that's there.
Yes, yeah, next to it. And then this is just looking south from that knoll, again, there's a, this little elevated area next to Harden Boulevard, looking at the existing, the office building. So this is, as we stated earlier, this is a major modification, so today is just the public hearing portion, the applicant has a presentation as well. I'll park it here at the, at the, at the site plan. This is the existing site plan that's adopted within, within the current PUD, that would obviously change with the revised, with the revised site plan, showing the 8,000-square-foot and, and the new office areas, without the shading, obviously. So with that, I'm going to lead it, hand it over to the applicant for their presentation, and then again, there's no, no recommendation here, we're just, we'll, we'll come back to you next month with, with our recommendation. So I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Good morning, everyone. Tom Woodrich with TDW Land Planning, here to present to you a little more information for our request today. Thanks, Philip, for, and Todd, for presenting a nice PowerPoint to show you what's going on. We're going to give just a little bit more to fill in the cracks. We've got a request today to modify the PUD as mentioned, to add additional 8,000-square-feet. This is a two-story, 8,000-square-foot building, so there's 4,000 square feet on each story. Here with me today is my client and owner of the property, Scott Schwab. We're requesting this use to add for additional parking and services, or, excuse me, office and services that we think will be critical in this area, as this has grown quite a bit, as you've seen tremendous residential growth and even retail, commercial growth across Harden in the last few years. So this will complement and support the addition, additional community growth that's occurring in this area. We're focused on architectural and landscape compatibility design. You'll see in the, what I'm going to show you, and Philip provided the renderings that we submitted to staff, to show how we've designed the building to be essentially mirroring the existing architecture, so it'll fit right in with what is already on site. We've also just wanted to point out that Azalea Park to the north is three stories. Our building is at the same setback as Azalea Park from Harden Boulevard, number one. And number two, it's a two-story, so it scales down, and then the existing square footage that Scott currently owns on-site is one story, so you have a nice transition from three to one on-site. We've provided sufficient parking, as Philip has shown you, to make sure that we've gotten an analysis of the, the use of the building and what we think will be sufficient to provide the supporting parking for the, the building that's proposed. And currently on-site, every time I've visited there, and every time Scott and I have spoken, there's always an excess of parking already. In fact, over the past weekend, there was a request by Azalea Park to utilize our parking lot over the weekend for an event that they were holding. So there's kind of a partnership between, and when overflow is necessary, you know, Azalea Park is a very busy business and residential facility, and they have a lot of traffic coming and going through the property, and so when they need something, they can rely on, on Scott to, to provide that at times. So we don't think parking is going to be an issue, but we just wanted to let this board know that we've evaluated deeply and put the maximum that we think that will support the buildings and not a minimum, so. Wanted to give just a better visual of where the building is located. So you can see essentially about where the property is located in red, hatched out, that's the footprint of the proposed building, Azalea Park to the north, which is above, and then the existing facilities to the south, next to the roundabout, that's where, on-site, you can see the, this is the building that's proposed, obviously, and here's the roundabout, these are the existing facilities. Wanted to give you a kind of a tour of the site, I'm not sure if you've ever driven on here, so just to give you a feel for how Scott and his team make sure the property is maintained. It's beautiful, the landscape walks, the canopy trees, the, just the condition of the buildings and the architecture of the buildings, a little bit more up close, so you can see what we're talking about here. This is looking into the site from Harden Boulevard, and as you see, even the signage is themed similar to the structure behind it, which is the existing structure on-site where the offices currently are, and this is the similar features that you'll see in the, the architectural renderings. So then pivoting, this is looking west on the left, and then pivoting a little bit to the northwest, so you can see Azalea Park, which is located here. So our site is right, there's the dumpster location source, our building will be rebuilt in this general location. It's difficult to, to get a feel sometimes from the angle, so I just want to give you a clear illustration of where we are. So this picture, I, I put together two photos, so you can get kind of almost like a panoramic view, shows Azalea Park to the right, which is the north, and then the existing building to the, to the south, and you can see some of the architectural details on the existing office building with the, similar to the signage out front with the little ballards on top of the pillars and the entrance feature, and then our building will have similar design located here. Again, like Philip pointed out, here is the location with the associated parking. We've located even some of the existing canopy trees to make sure that we're going to maintain them, we're going to do everything we can to do that, but from our understanding, here's the tree that's shown on the site. Staff had brought that up, you know, where are the existing trees, we'd really like to keep that. The client loves trees, they've maintained the existing trees and kept them healthy, and would love to increase, and they've even increased the landscaping since they've attained the property, and the appreciation for that overall look is, is important to, to how he presents himself, so. So again, this is the look, now you can kind of see, after I've pointed out some of the features of the existing structures and signage, how this blends in very well and mirrors exactly what is on-site. This is looking to the north, Azalea Park is behind this building in this particular rendering view, and then this is then pivoting and looking directly to the west from Harden Boulevard, and you can see the existing one-story office back behind to the left side of the screen. So the architecture mirrors both the windows, if you, if you notice even from the first ground shots I showed you with the landscaping and side of the building, even the, the window treatments are nearly identical, so everything has been designed to look like it will fit in architecturally, design-wise, scale, the proportions of the building. We consulted with our architect to make sure everything is going to be compatible with both the look and the adjacent buildings on either side of us. So that's what I have for visual presentations, and I'll stand if you have any questions for me. Oh, may I just add one last thing? So I did receive a call from a client after the city mailed out mailers to the surrounding residents, we did get a, a call from Meere Village to the, directly to the west, there was some confusion when Philip brought up, the staff planner brought up, the boundary of the PUD. If you notice, the PUD is larger than our site, we are one of the two parcels currently within that PUD boundary, and yet the city sends out notifications 500 feet from the PUD boundary, so it grabbed a lot of other residents around. And when they saw the image that was on the city flyer, it showed a boundary that was very close to their, some of their parking on the eastern boundary of their site, and I said, well, we're not, we're not putting anything near, we're not changing anything that address, that, that impacts you, and that conversation went well with that resident, and he said that he would, you know, share with neighbors he spoke to, but of course, you know, I just wanted to present that, that we did get a call about some questions about where this was, and I clarified that we're very far to the east of where they live, and the impacts that we're providing wouldn't be anywhere near their, their residence, so. Are there any questions?
It's going to be a, it's going to be a single company office building, or there are going to be multiple tenants in there?
Likely multiple tenants. We haven't, we, we started the build-out and had discussions with our architect based upon the build-out of it. It's likely that someone could take the entire building, but sensitive to multiple-sized businesses, there might be a desire for someone to just have 2,000 square feet, or a quarter, or what would be a half of the first floor. So we're trying to design it with that in mind to accommodate a mid-size office business, an attorney, you know, something of that nature that doesn't need, you know, 8,000-square-feet. But also if they wanted to, to lease the entire building, that's also been in the discussion.
What about signage on the building? Is, has that even been addressed yet?
There's not going to be any, what we, I think we still have room, if I remember seeing on the, the monument sign out front, to add something, but we're not proposing any signage on the outside of the building attached to it. The, the overall design, like I mentioned earlier, this, this, the client is very sensitive to the look of what is at the entrance of Grasslands, and wants to make sure that, both, that's why we've worked hard to ensure that the architecture is almost identical, I bet you won't be able to tell much of the difference, both in the color palette, the scale, fenestration, columns, all the design has been sensitive to the existing on-site structures, so it looks like it blends right in, and then the additional landscaping and, and things that we've going to be adding.
Okay, have any comments at all? Okay, well, we have covered it.
A couple of questions. Just with regards to traffic and proposed parking off of that access point, I guess largely, do we perceive any concern about some of those parking spots fairly close to that access point, and then, again, not totally grasping the, the businesses or business that might be in there, what, what kind of travel expectations are there?
Thanks for that question. The use that we're proposing, professional offices, potential medical offices of sort, but depends on how it's marketed and what demand there is. It's been designed to accommodate a mixture, as mentioned in the, the presentation, that we've got parking on the site plan that accommodates up to 50% of either, but in terms of access and use of that driveway, we've got plenty of room for parking, you can see from this photo, and with the one Philip provided as well, with the additional parking in this green area here. This is an entrance drive that is used by Azalea Park, yes, but they also have their access, as you see, coming out the other location as well. You know, with our uses that we have, office uses are lower trip generators than, than, I would even argue that they left to the north, and commercial uses in general, we don't anticipate any problems with, and we, we won't be blocking or causing any problems with that. And every time I've been out there, you'll see a car or two go by, and it's, it's enough, but it's not, it's not as busy as per se the, the target parking lot, it's not like that sort of parking situation. So we're adding just about a dozen parking spaces on there, and there are going to be office uses that we don't anticipate will be coming and going frequently enough to cause any issues with that interest.
I can speak to that. I leased one of the two existing buildings for several years prior to Scott's company buying it, and traffic, business traffic through there is almost nil. You have Raymond James in there, they generate very few vehicles, there's an oral surgeon in there, they probably generate the most traffic through that center or that complex right now, and then we had my real estate business, and I think Scott's company, it's about the same number of vehicles going in and out on any daily basis. It's not a lot, I've never seen that parking lot full, ever.
It was just a public, public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, review of minutes of the May meeting.
Okay, I assume everybody has had the time to review the minutes, and do you have any objections, any questions on the minutes from anyone? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as written? The second.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Item six, green swamp area of critical state concern, site plan approval for GB Lakeland, Phase Three owner LLC to construct a 31,713-square-foot docking facility within Phase Three of Center State Logistics Park on property located at 3425 Old Polk City Road. Owner, GB Lakeland, Phase Three, owner LLC, applicant, Matt Silverrain, Gulf Coast Consulting, Inc.
Good morning again, for the record, Philip Scares, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Periodically, we come to you with site plans, approvals that this has to be, need to be transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for, for their review, because this is within the green swamp. So this site has an existing zoning of I-2 and a business park future of land use. It was previously approved as a 114,708-square-foot warehouse building within the, within the Center State Logistics Park, and in lieu of that, the applicant proposes a, a new, a new facility here, a new docking facility, which I'll, there's a description in the site plan, but it's a 31,713-square-foot docking facility as part of Phase 1B. And here's the, this is the, so I'll just, I'll just back up and just give you the location here. This is a site that has, the Center State Logistics Park has access both on Old Polk City Road as well as State Road 33. This primary, this parcel has its main access off of Old Polk City Road, and this is the zoning here, you can see the green dots, it just indicates this is within the green swamp, critical area, critical area state, critical state concern, I can't even, I can't even say it now, green swamp area of critical state concern, and this is the parcel here that was a part of that, it was part of the phase for this larger warehouse building here, it was Phase 1B of this, this building here that fronts Tom Cow Road, that's your Phase 2. You can say this is Phase 3, since this is the last parcel in development, that's still called Phase 1, or Phase 1B, but it was a 114,000-square-foot warehouse, the site was, has been altered already, so the environmental aspects of the, of the site have already, there was, the state had already looked at it once before, but this is just, we're modifying the, the approved site plan. So the applicant describes the operation as a, as a freight facility and operating, and operating as a central hub for the efficient movement and processing of goods. In addition to forklift transport pallets of goods to their designated storage areas, the state-of-the-art technology plays a crucial role in the facility's operation. Advanced inventory management systems track each product's location, quantity, and specific details, enabling real-time monitoring and efficient allocation of resources. Freight handlers expert, expertly load and unload the trucks with precision carefully, matching the shipment details to minimize handling time and maximize efficiency. Automotive carriers, automotive conveyor systems assist in mobile and, and moving packages swiftly from one area to another seamlessly, integrating with the human workforce. And that is a quote from the applicant's, you know, their, their publication describing this, this facility. Again, the use is already permitted, this has been reviewed, gone through two levels of staff review, as we learned previously, site plan review is administrative, it doesn't require a public hearing or anything, but this is, this is specifically for your transmittal of this site plan to DEO for their review. They have a 45-day review, we hope it's going to be sooner than that, since they've already seen this site before, which I'm hopefully talking them into giving a little more expedited review. So with that in mind, here is the new site plan, oh, excuse me, this is what, this is the existing site plan, showing the, showing how this, this was approved previously as the warehouse, and this is the new site plan showing that, that new docking facility there, with, using that new technology for, for their business. And this, this is the site plan that will be transmitted to, to DEO. Again, the green swamp, critical state concern is the significant headwaters for the Whitley Coochie, Akla Waha, Hillsborough, and the Peace Rivers, and it's the main source of the Floridian aquifer and our primary drinking water system, so that's, you know, the, the environmental importance of the green swamp cannot be understated, that's why the extra layer of view is required with, with the state. With that, I'll, and stand for any questions you may have. When you vote for this, what I'll, what'll happen is I'll send this up to DEO, they'll have their review, period, and then once they issue their approval, then we can approve the site plan for the developer to go ahead and, and issue building permits, and get their building permit reviewed and approved.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. I just need a motion and a...
I don't think we need a motion, yeah. We do?
No, we do. Yes, we do.
Motion to continue. Next week we present.
No, no, no. This is, this is, you're transmitting now to DEO.
This is, this is, we'd be requesting to transmit the site plan for DEO for formal review.
Mr. Chair, the...
I'm missing something on my sheet.
Yeah, pursuant to Article Six, Section 6.3.11.1, the Planning and Zoning Board review and approval is required for all site plans in the green swamp area to, so the approval is necessary from this board to be voted on for the site plan to be sent off prior...
I do have a quick question. Does that same developer own any other tracts surrounding that in the green swamp?
I think this is a different new owner. Oh, there you go. Sorry. Hey, how you doing?
Morning. Matt Silverrain, Gulf Coast Consulting, DEO on the project 13825 Icotte Boulevard, Suite 605 Clearwater. So there is what's called an REA agreement, which is a reciprocal easement agreement, and it's an agreement that was put in place that will allow multiple owners. So as Phillip mentioned in his thorough presentation, thank you very much, PepsiCo owns Phase One and Phase Two, but Phase Three will be owned hopefully after you guys approve this and DEO approves this by XPO Logistics. And there is an agreement in place that allows them to share drainage, utilities, cross-access, and that sort of thing. So it will be multiple owners.
No, my question was, the surrounding parcels, are they owned by the same person? So that would be a no.
That would be a no, yeah. For example, to, just to the east is, I believe, Amazon's, an Amazon warehouse, but it's all industrial, it's all similar uses around.
Motion if you would like to have.
Are you entertaining?
In motions?
I'm entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I love those simple ones. Thank you very much.
It's for your page.
Old version?
I think so, yeah.
Item seven, election of new officers.
So it's that time of year for you to vote on your officers for the coming year. Mr. Roberts, current secretary, his term will be ending next month, so he will be moving on from here, so you need to consider, obviously, his position as well, so.
Put our hats in the ring?
Yeah.
I'd like to be secretary.
Nominations? Who will accept people who wish to be considered for a position?
I nominate myself for secretary.
Nominate who?
Myself. For Terry.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor? Now here you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I, the other officers out here for chair and secretary.
Vice chair. Okay. Do we have any nominations for the chair? Seeing none, the motion fails, hoping no chair next year.
Any volunteers, anyone who would like to serve as chair?
Be happy to serve if others want me to, but I'm not going to put my nomination.
I nominate Joseph for position of chairman.
All in favor of Joe being the chair? Aye. Opposed? Vice chair. Yeah, vice chair, we need a nomination.
Do we have anyone who...
Interested?
I'll be vice chair.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson suggested he would be interested. We have a motion.
Do you only like chair?
No.
Anybody in the audience like to be vice chair?
To make a motion that...
Line.
Vice chair.
God's going to catch you for that.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Like unfortunately it passed.
I guess his, our officers next year will be, Joe will be the chair, I'll be the vice chair, Leanne will be the secretary.
Savano will be secretary.
I'm sorry, Savano will be secretary. Savano will be secretary. Look, we received several awards a couple of weeks ago at a city meeting. Congratulations on that also. Yeah, you got up there, you, for all your volunteer hours. Yeah.
Item eight, report of city commission action on planning and zoning board recommendations along with planning and transportation manager's report.
Right, well, yesterday's city commission meeting, let's see, the Northside Assembly of God preschool was approved, as well as the Union Drive Mobile Home Park conditional use. Both of those conditional uses were approved by the city commission. Coming up for next month, we have an ADU request at 922 Fairlington Drive, and that would be a pool house that can double, doubles the guest house and garage. We also have a conditional use for Roar Preparatory Vocational Academy on New Jersey Road, and this would expand the use through K through 12. And I believe this is on the, this is just north of the Geneva Academy site. So this, there's already a conditional use on this site, but it's got to be, got to be modified. We have a conditional use for, let's see, it's a, would be a cell tower out of Lakeside Preserve, south of the Parkway, east of Pipkin Creek Road. We have an annexation, a request for a Lakeland Distribution Center on Waring Road. This is on the east side between Drainfield Road and Parkway Corporate Center. And so that one's going to be a little different in that they'll be going through the site plan review process in the county. There are a couple of city issues that we'll want to have input on and have come through our, our review, but that, that would allow them to go ahead and continue to move forward while they're going through the annexation. And then we have a rezone request at Lakeland Regional Health on Parkview Place, and this is one acre's previously developed, or was previously developed land from RA4 to Office 01. And I believe this is to provide renovation of existing office use as part of the teaching, teaching academy or teaching school that's going into Lakeland Regional. And then Lakeland Regional Health also intends to add additional office, which will extend beyond the limits of the boundary of the 01. So there are a couple of things that will have to be done as part of that request, as part of the ongoing expansion and evolution of Lakeland Regional's campus. So that's what we have on tap for next month. I'd like to take the opportunity too, to introduce Audrey McGuire, our new senior planner. She comes with us from the city of Zephyr Hills. And so, you know, we will expect her to give a speech now, just kidding, but we welcome her to the team, and she sits the ground running, and this is what's your fourth week?
Please say.
Something like that, so, so, so brand new since the, since the last P&amp;Z meeting, so welcome Audrey.
Before we adjourn, I would like to thank Ronald for all of his hard work over the years on this board. He's been a vital part of it, always has good questions and always keeps me on the straight and narrow. We thank you very much. We'll miss you. Come back and visit.
I hope he'll be here next month.
Next month, oh, oh, forget, forget what I said, Ronald. Next month, forget it.
You're not getting rid of us that easy.
At any rate, I think, is there anything else on the floor? Any other questions, any other comments? We'll adjourn and we'll all see Ronald next week. Thank you.
Thank you all.